As I was just informing planning commissioners, we are going to start the meeting first off with some more information from really our housing expert in the area, Ryan Kilpatrick. He has a little bit more to share and then certainly we have him here available for questions and answers for planning commissioners. So we'll do that, then we'll jump into some staff comments that we have and then take public comment and then get into planning commission deliberation on the items in the agenda. So with no further ado, I'll turn it over to Ryan Kilpatrick, Housing Next Director.
Do we need a roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I was ready, see.
Thank you. Would you like to direct that? Valerie, yes, can we please do a roll call?
Yes, we can. DeBlack?
Participating by conference. I was gonna, I was gonna listen to what somebody else said. But hey, I'm here.
In Holland, Michigan, right, Dave?
I am here in Holland, Michigan. Sitting in the sunshine. What a rare commodity.
So nice.
All right, Raymond?
Lynn Raymond is present by teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
Blunt?
Andrew Blunt is present and attending via teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
Box?
Nathan Box is present and attending via teleconference from beautiful Holland, Michigan.
Van Antwerp?
Fred Van Antwerp, present and teleconferencing from Holland, Michigan.
Anderson?
Brooke Anderson is present and teleconferencing from Holland, Michigan.
And I have not seen commissioners Lozano Owens or Kenyon join the meeting yet.
Well, Kenyon did say that he may be a little bit late. I haven't heard from the other two, so we'll, we'll hopefully see them when they come. Thank you. Now, Ryan, turn it over to Ryan Kilpatrick.
All right, thanks Jenna. This won't take very much time. Jenna and I had some conversations about just recent data to get a better picture of what's been going on with housing in the city over the last few years. And this was actually inspired by some folks who are much smarter than me, just asking questions around what's been the rate of change. And we thought, well, let's figure out what's been the rate of change. So what we wanted to do is get a better understanding of amid community concerns about any particular neighborhood being overwhelmed by multifamily rentals or something other than single family. We wanted to have a sense of what's been happening more recently in the city of Holland and how does that inform your decision-making process? So I'm just going to give you the data and then if, if you want me to stay on to answer questions or talk more about what the data means, that's fine. Otherwise, I'll just leave you with the data. So what we know is since 2014, we've had 18 multifamily buildings get converted back into single-family homes. And so that could be a two-unit that gets converted back to a single-family or it might be a larger home that had three or more units that has been converted back to single-family. So we've had 18 of those in the last six years. And we've had zero properties that have been converted from single-family to a two-or-more-unit property. So nobody in the last six years has taken advantage of the very limited zoning provisions today that would allow them to do that. Now similarly, what we've seen in, Joe Aravalo was able to help us kind of identify based on the principal residence exemption, that's what PRE stands for. So when you're a homeowner, you get a principal residence exemption on your tax bill, meaning you don't pay full freight mileage rates. You pay the 36 mils or whatever it is at the local level instead of the full 48. So we had 152 properties that went from a partial PRE to a full 100% PRE. So what that means is we had 152 properties that had a rental unit as part of the property and the property owner decided, ah, we're going to get rid of that rental unit and it's just going to be a single-family home. So as you see, now we can begin to compare, we had 18 that were full-on multifamily buildings that were converted to single-family. And then we had 152 owner-occupied buildings that were converted back to single-family. So we're starting to see a trend in the neighborhoods of more single-family, less multi-unit properties. Oh, wait. Undo, forget everything I said for that last bullet. So the, what I needed to say about that last bullet was we had 152 homes that had been rental properties that were converted to single-family owner-occupied. So it wasn't that they were owner-occupied and had a rental unit. It was that they were rental units by themselves, no owner-occupant onsite, that suddenly became owner-occupied over the last six years. So that's our 152-unit number. The 37 number is the number of homes that had an extra dwelling unit that had been rented out before and is now 100% principal residence exemption, meaning it's just the owner-occupant, no rental unit associated with it. So I, I hope that clarifies things. Sorry for getting those two data points mixed up.
So those 37 homes had an owner, an owner was living in that home as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then I think this, yeah, that's my last one. The 360 number is the number of new single-family owner-occupied homes that have been built in the city in the last six years. That was a super surprising number to me. I wasn't expecting to see that number, that high of a number of new single-family homes. But I, I think what's really interesting about this data is we're seeing some very pronounced trends toward single-family owner-occupied housing in the city. And I think that's illustrative of all of the really important work that many of our nonprofits and church groups have been doing over the last 15 to 20 years, Jubilee Ministries and HomeCorps, several of our near downtown churches, all investing in, in property and investing in homeownership opportunities. So we have this strong trend moving towards homeownership and single-family owner-occupied. And what it's doing, you know, I think you'll see where I'm going with this, is we're beginning to eliminate options from neighborhoods across the city. We're, we're removing the option for something other than a single-family home and trending more towards primarily single-family owner-occupied homes. So I think as, as you think about the proposed zoning standards in the Udo, as we've talked about providing for housing choice at every neighborhood, know that generally the market is moving towards more single-family owner-occupied and away from something other than that. And I think the question is, to what extent is zoning driving that and to what extent is market demand driving that? And I think really beginning to unpack, you know, how, how many new units are desired as a result of any zoning updates? And benchmarking some metrics, like how many units do you desire? At what point would you want to cap that if you were going to cap it? And how do we measure it over the period of time that we want to measure to decide, are we trending too quickly in the other direction? Or are we in good shape in terms of providing housing choice across neighborhoods?
Great. Planning commissioners, do you have anything to ask Ryan either about the data that he just presented or anything from last week's?
I just want to clarify, Ryan, this was for the entire city of Holland, correct?
Yes.
Not the township, any of the townships surrounding them. So this is just the boundaries of the city of Holland?
That's correct.
Okay.
I could comment a little bit because I've actually chaired the R Street Committee back when we were trying to encourage conversions of two-family rentals to owner-occupied, single-families and obviously some of what we placed in, in those, some of the things the planning commission determined at that point in history have obviously worked.
Yeah, and you're talking post-recession. So we had quite a few empty homes at that time, too. When you're talking the early 2010s, you're talking about a lot of vacant homes that were, were around the city of Holland, especially in the downtown neighborhoods.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead Fred.
Ryan, I heard your, I watched your presentation to city council the other day, yours and Mark's presentation. And I thought it was really fascinating, full of useful information. And one of the questions that I had about that, I noted that how many new units are coming online in, in the city of Holland in various locations? And even there are untapped resources for that as well, like in the North End. But my question was with all of those units coming online, do you expect that there's going to be some impact on the price, the rental prices across the whole market because of the additional units coming on?
Well, that's the hope Fred. I mean, what we're trying to do is, is play quite a bit of catch-up with where the market had been. So we had a significant lack of housing supply across the marketplace. And we've been trying to create as much new housing supply as we can along transportation corridors where we've got bus service and where we've got larger lots that aren't within established neighborhoods because we knew we needed a lot of supply. And so I think as that housing supply comes online this year and next year, it will have hopefully a strong impact on price. Now, what I anticipate, the primary impact is going to be, is a slowing of the rate of increase. What we've seen is a very rapid increase in rental rates and in, in home values over the last several years. And that rapid increase is the result of a mismatch between supply and demand. We've got more people wanting a product than there is product available and so they're bidding the price up. So by providing more product into the marketplace, what we're hoping to do is stabilize price, not drive prices down necessarily. What is likely to happen though is for older homes that have not had a lot of investment in them, whether they're owner-occupied or their rental product, that older, less rehabilitated product is going to fetch less, either in terms of rent or in terms of sales value as we get a more balanced market.
Yeah.
So in certain circumstances, rental rates may go down on certain properties, but it's mostly going to be those older properties that haven't been invested in and need somebody to show them a little bit of love. It's probably not going to be, your average rent is not likely to go down across the market. It's going to be those, those properties that most need some investment.
Okay. And a real quick question. There was mention of a concept called workplace workforce housing. And I hadn't seen that defined anywhere. Do you have a kind of a easy definition for what that means in terms of price of units or the kind of units or?
Yeah, so workforce housing tends to be housing that is affordable to households that earn roughly 50% of the area median income, up to 120% of the area median income.
Okay.
So in, in the Holland-Zeland market, that's primarily going to be workers who are earning about $28,000, $30,000 a year, up to about $65,000 to $75,000 a year.
Okay.
That has really been the primary target market for Housing Next all along. It's been that workforce that is working full-time, sometimes qualifies as the Alice population and is, is either priced out of the market or is spending too much of their income on housing.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan, two of the, Brooke, if I may, I'm sorry, I'm used to chairing the meeting, not asking for permission. It's all right?
All right.
All right, great. Thank you. Sorry about that. Two, two of the questions that you raised, Ryan, are the ones that, that are really ticking with me today are the, you know, how much of those numbers is, are related to zoning and how much of that is related to market? And, and our job here with this project is dealing with zoning and the last thing I want to be doing is trying to chase the market because, because we'll never, we'll never catch up and we'll always be responding to what happened years before. And so what I'm, what I'm hoping to do here is make good long-term decisions for the community rather than short-term, short-term decisions for the community. And a lot of this, and you, you know more than I do, you said smarter people than you, you know, raise these questions, but I, I rely on folks like you that are crunching the data. This, a lot of this seems to me to be market-driven right now. Am I, am I wrong in thinking that? Or where, where are we going with these numbers? What are they, what, what's behind these?
Yeah, well, so the, the core data behind this is 65% of the market, of the housing market today wants walkable amenity-rich neighborhoods. 35% of the market still loves being in single-family subdivisions with, you know, that are primarily drivable. But 65% of the market wants walkable neighborhoods that are close to coffee shops and restaurants and, you know, dry cleaners and all of this stuff. Only 5% of the housing product across the state of Michigan is walkable and amenity-rich. And Holland happens to be one of those markets where you have that product available. And so what we're finding is we have both young people who are 25 to 40 and older folks who now no longer have kids living at home and are ready to downsize. Both of those demographics are converging on these walkable urban places. Both demographics want it. Both demographics have some money to spend at certain segments of those generations. And they're willing to compete for it, right? They're, they're willing to now spend $300,000 for a house that five or six years ago would have sold for $180,000. And that's what's driving prices up and it's what's driving competition towards single-family owner-occupied. There just isn't a lot of that product available in the marketplace. And so when somebody sees a listing go up in one of these great neighborhoods that's walkable and amenity-rich, they know that if they don't bid $20,000, $30,000 over asking price, they're not going to get it.
I can attest to that because we sold our house in 18th Street to a couple from South Olive area. All their kids moved out and they bought our house. We never even had to list it.
Okay, so, so Ryan, I think what I heard you say is folks are looking for amenity-rich, walkable, single-family residential and, and Holland's attractive and we have that. So my first thought as mayor is, okay, how do we preserve that? And how do we increase that? Well, we don't have, we don't have the ability to be able to, we don't have the space, I guess, or the vacant land to be able to increase the amount of single-family residential, walkable, close-to-amenities properties in and around the downtown area. That's, it's just not physically possible. But what we've been spending an awful lot of our time talking about here are rentals, about increasing that rental space or turning from, from single-family to adding an ADU on there. And there was a concept actually that you mentioned, I was at the city council meeting that, that Fred talked about, which I had known about, which I hadn't thought about in the context of this, is a multi-unit owner-occupied residence, like doing multiple condominium units. And that's, I think that's something that would be really important for the other planning commissioners to hear as well, that, that there's the ability to do multiple-family owner-occupied in a, in that, in that area as well. So I'd ask you if you could explain that to the folks in the planning commission?
Yeah, sure. And you sparked another idea that I want to make sure I touch on, so don't let me forget. So yes, one of the things that actually happens fairly frequently in markets like Holland where you have a lot of, of drivers towards ownership in walkable communities, but limited supply and a desire to preserve the historic character, right? Like I, I think it's relatively community consensus that what we don't want is a lot of five and six-story buildings embedded in the middle of these neighborhoods. We want to keep these two, two-and-a-half-story buildings. The other opportunity is when you've got 3,000 square feet or 3,500 square feet, it becomes very easy to create two or three or sometimes four condominiums within that building. That can be done and still preserve all of the historic character inside, right? Like you, you don't have to destroy the historic nature of the home. This happens fairly regularly in, in most cities with the same kind of fabric. Carmel, Indiana does it. Madison, Wisconsin does it. You've got some other Midwest cities of similar size and scale that do the same thing. So I, I think it is important to recognize that by allowing for more than one dwelling unit on a particular property doesn't mean that the second dwelling unit has to be a rental. Although I would say we do have some really important members of the community who are renters and choose to be renters regardless of their income. Now, the other point that I want to make sure that I make, and this gets back to, to the mayor's point about having just a limited supply of land area that is close to the downtown. There is another really important thing that this planning commission has done and that staff have done with the proposed Udo that I think probably needs a little bit more praise. And that is you've created some new districts, the Neighborhood Mixed Use District, the, the Greenfield Mixed Use District, where what you're doing is allowing for more of that walkable amenity-rich product in neighborhoods that haven't seen a lot of investment over the last 10 or 15 years. So the Waverly Corridor, the Lincoln Avenue Corridor, those are places where there could be more slightly higher density, mixed-use kinds of investments that essentially create new pockets of desirability and new pockets of investment that allow for more housing choice, simultaneous to the kind of small incremental adjustments that you're considering making in the TNR and, and the LDR districts. So you, you are essentially creating more supply that can be walkable and amenity-rich. What's, what has to happen is, it's a little bit of a chicken in the egg, is we've got to get those amenities in those neighborhoods that make them amenity-rich so that they become more desirable. But we do know how to do that. So we can be making investments in that direction to begin to relieve some of the pressure from those near downtown neighborhoods while simultaneously allowing for a little bit more housing choice everywhere.
Thank you.
Brian, or Brooke, actually, can I ask a question to Ryan?
I guess so.
What would you say to those who have, have talked about that there's a lot of apartments coming online citywide? You spoke about that a lot, you know, at the, at the city council meeting that, that people are referring to. And like to what you just said, you know, that there's more opportunity for housing in other zone districts that the planning commission is being intentional about. Why then would you say it's also important for housing, for more housing opportunities inside the existing neighborhoods?
Yeah. What, frankly, from my perspective, it's a matter of exclusivity versus inclusivity. So what we've tried to do is, is create as many opportunities for that demand to go in new housing that doesn't create any displacement or change in existing neighborhoods. And so where, where that can be done, we're, we're pushing for new product in those places outside of established neighborhoods. And we're building hundreds of units at a time. So what we don't want is to build hundreds of units in an established neighborhood that would disrupt the character or the feel of that neighborhood. But I think what's important is to recognize we're trending towards a much more exclusive city of Holland, at least in, in the near downtown neighborhoods. And we're not there yet, right? So we have this trend that, that we're beginning to see and more on the horizon if we look to our, our counterparts in other parts of the country. If Holland is anything like other walkable amenity-rich cities, we're going to see dramatic change over the next 10 to 15 years. And so from my perspective, by allowing a little bit more housing choice in those neighborhoods, what you're doing is stemming the effects of exclusivity, right? Property values are going to continue to rise. Investment in single-family homes is going to continue to rise. Incomes are going to continue to rise. And the more we're able to give homeowners the, the choice to say, you know what, I really want to have my aging mother be able to move in with me, but I don't want to have her in my kitchen every day, all day, right? I want to have her, I want to give her the opportunity to have her own space. Or my kids can't afford to live anyplace on their own. I want to welcome them back. But again, I don't want them in my house. I want them in, in a separate unit on the property. The other thing that I think is critical here is we have, and, and I continue to be blown away by the Holland community and the, the faith community in Holland. Because what I continue to hear from churches is that they want to be contributors to the solution. They want to help solve for the lack of housing and the lack of housing choice. And they're willing to put investments into it. They're willing to take congregational dollars and invest in their neighborhood. Currently, there aren't a lot of mechanisms for churches to do that, other than to buy a single-family house and rent it out. In some instances, that makes sense and they have done that. There are churches that own some single-family homes. It doesn't make a lot of financial sense. So that's like pure philanthropy and it doesn't go very far. But when you allow those churches to make an investment in one or two homes that are adjacent to their property or maybe even invest in putting a couple of homes on the church property, maybe on the parking lot. If you allow those buildings to contain more than one unit, especially where they're serving single adults or two adults with no kids, it becomes much easier for those church investments to go farther within the neighborhood, to do more and to be more sustainable for the congregation over time as opposed to being a purely philanthropic gesture that doesn't get at the true heart of the need. So really what we're doing is trying to create more opportunities for individual players to have an impact. Even though that impact is going to be subtle, it'll be meaningful.
Great. And can you speak just again, I'm not sure whether or not you did last week, but we were talking about the true cash value of $180,000 or less for duplex properties. And so as you know, one of the numbers in terms of eligibility, if we were to change, the planning commission were to change it to 3,250 square feet per unit with a 50-foot wide frontage as the standard, that would go up to like about, about 900 properties that would be eligible for duplexes. Can you speak just quickly to, you know, taking into the financial feasibility, you know, what, what is likely based on your expertise to really be, you know, the number? I mean, not 900 will go, you know, to duplexes, but do you have a, an idea based on, on what you know?
Yeah, well, yeah, I think Jenna, what, what you're getting at is even though 900 properties are physically eligible, that won't nearly be the number of properties that actually end up with a, a second unit on them. And that's for a variety of reasons, financing being one of the biggest hurdles. So if an outside landlord were going to, to buy an existing single-family home and convert it into a two-unit, they're making a financial investment, right? That landlord will only do it if there's a profit to be earned and a reasonable profit. And so the $180,000 benchmark is based on what the, the average rent rate is in the neighborhoods right now, which is about $1,000 a month. So keep in mind, most of the renters in, in the neighborhoods today are spending somewhere between $700 and $1,400 a month. And the average is roughly $1,000. So if you take $180,000 price point, assume that there's a renovation cost in order to create that second dwelling unit and then divide that by 10 years' worth of investment and 12 months out of the year, you end up with two units that rent for about $1,000 a month. Now, if you spend more than $180,000, if you spend $200,000 or $230,000, which is now the average sales price of a house in the city of Holland, that $230,000 is now out of reach in terms of profitability for an outside landlord to make any money off of. If, if somebody were going to come in from Grand Rapids or even out of state and say, I'm going to buy this as an investment, turn it into two units and make a bunch of money, they can't invest $230,000 and expect to make any money based on our current rental rates. People won't pay the rent to make the math work. So that's not to say that rents won't, can't and won't go up. Maybe they will go up if we continue to limit supply. And so what you've got to recognize as the planning commission is you have your hand on the valve, right? You get to decide how much supply do we make available in these neighborhoods? And based on the amount of supply we make available, to Fred's earlier question, that's going to start to dictate how much prices go up and how quickly they go up. And obviously, especially based on all of the comments that have come in, there are a lot of factors to be weighing here, right? It's not just supply and demand. It's not just that we have folks in need of housing. There are a dozen other factors that need to be considered. But you do have your hand on the spigot in one sense. Because you can control how much supply ultimately is available, that will also begin to dictate price. But for now, price will have a, a significant impact on what's actually financially viable. And the last thing I'll say on that is I expect, based on the trends that we're seeing right now, the value of a single-family home is going to continue to increase well beyond what is an affordable rent. And so even if, if you adopt the provisions as-is, I'm not convinced that we'll get a lot or very many new units as a result because there is so much competition for single-family owner-occupied housing. I think there will be so much of that competition that landlords will frankly get priced out of the market.
That was awesome, Ryan. That was a really good explanation. So it helped out a lot.
Any other questions for Ryan from planning commissioners?
I do have just a comment for Ryan, too. Brooke, if I may. So Ryan, I know the, the study, your, your data went back to, was it 2014? And I know you, you had to put parameters on it, you know, somewhere, you know, you probably couldn't go back. And I know you you had to put parameters on it, you know, somewhere, you know, you probably couldn't go back to a two thousand or whatever. My gut reaction is that, well, yeah, I mean, thi- this data is really kind of showing it's it's a strong direction, okay, going one way, going one way. We're seeing rentals converting to owner occupied. My gut reaction, though, is if we would take those numbers, go all the way back to pre recession times, we probably would see that right around now, we're probably in the ballpark of where we were pre recession. So we had hundreds of homes, you know, I mean, this happened in every community. You know, hundreds of homes, you know, go vacant. Lots of them, I mean, dozens, if not hundreds of them flipped from being owner occupied in the city to rentals. Okay, because people just they lost their homes. You know, investors were able to come in and buy homes, you know, for fifteen thousand dollars, you know? And wow, what a great time to be an investor. But my my gut notion is kind of that we're back. We're back to almost kind of pre recession days. Do you do you have any kind of a reaction or kind of? Just wondering how you may feel about that.
Well, we could certainly do an analysis going back to two thousand if the data is available and see what was the rate of homeownership in two thousand relative to now. Honestly, I I think based on the investments that have been made by Jubilee and HomeCorps and others, they have really driven part of the desire for new middle and higher income homeowners in some of these neighborhoods. Some of these neighborhoods have been have been attracting a lot of single family homeowners for a long time. Others have have really begun to convert from rentals to homeownership as a result of that drive. I think you're absolutely right, Mark, that the four year period coming out of the two thousand and eight crash and recession absolutely played an impact on the number of rental units. And a lot of the the folks who bought up those homes were private equity companies from New Jersey and Connecticut and had no tie to the community. And I hope that more and more of those are selling to to owner occupants who are living in the city of Holland. But none of that negates the fact that the broader trend is toward more walkable amenity rich neighborhoods. And I think that's really what you're experiencing right now. There is absolutely this kind of pendulum swing that has happened as a result of the recession and the foreclosure crisis. And and we can go back a little bit further to figure out how much that has factored in over that four to five year time period. But know that I don't see any abatement of the desire for more single family owner occupied product. And and to the extent that there is room to build more of that in our amenity rich neighborhoods, gosh, let's do it. But to the extent to which we can continue to provide options for people to choose from, that's going to be important, too.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I would like to ask, Mark, do you recall what year the planning commission established the ninety six hundred square foot lot size? So we would avoid having conversions?
Yeah, so that was back, oh, boy. You're testing my gray matter. That was
I know, I could call I could call Marvin, but I figured I'd ask you.
I'm going to say that was probably twenty years ago or so. When we did the mastery buildings of of the whole central neighborhood area. That's back when we created the T R N Zone District.
Okay, thanks.
What year you created the T R N?
I'm going to say it's roughly twenty years ago. It might have been the late nineties or so.
Okay.
Just acknowledging Ryan's time, I know that you have another commitment. So if if there aren't any other questions for him, thank you very much, Ryan, again for coming.
Thanks a lot, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, so just to point out, I see that Commissioner Luis Lozano has joined us, Jennifer Owens has joined us, and Andy Kenyon has joined us, just for the record. Welcome, everybody.
All right, for the tardiness.
That's a problem. Okay, so like I had said in the beginning, I just have a couple of staff comments to share. This is a response to the conversations that planning commission planning commission had asked specifically for some examples of these kind of purchases or house offers that people have been receiving in the neighborhoods. So there were three that that I was forwarded, and I called all of them to just find out, you know, what's the background of of them sending them out, you know, why now? Are you aware of any of the conversation that's been happening with the zoning talks? Things like that. So just a quick rundown on that, spoke with Adam from Hometown Development and Ada. They're responsible for this letter that many property owners have received, especially in the R T R N Zone District. He said that the reason that they would just be receiving them now is that they're just expanding outside of the the Grand Rapids region. He also said that they drive through neighborhoods and they look for especially the really nice homes so that they could buy them for cash generally and then flip them easily. He said that they're completely unaware of any potential zoning changes and made sure to say that the public is, you know, more than welcome to call at any time to to learn more about what it is that that they're trying to do. There's also apparently some people have been receiving text messages from someone named Brandon. I think that there's other text messages out there as well I've heard of. But specifically, this is the one that I was sent and the phone number that I was sent with it. And he is from Homewise Property Group outs in St. Joseph. He said that they actually specifically look for multi unit homes that are generally more rundown and that has have absentee owners or, you know, the investors, basically. And that they have a mission very similar to HomeCorps where they take those houses and turn that flip them into single family owner occupied homes. He said that they've been in Holland for about a year. And they also were unaware of any zoning changes, but that those zoning changes wouldn't affect their efforts at all. And so he also said, feel free to call or text him. Another one that I had received actually from a planning commissioner who received this is is from Remax. I spoke with her. She said that she sent out these mailings on behalf of a client that's specifically looking for house, a a nice house in the in the vicinity, in the Hope College vicinity. She said that she that she herself is somewhat aware of the zoning standard changes after speaking with one of our colleagues in the the Building Department at City Hall. However, that that wasn't at all where they're they're looking for a single family home. So I just wanted to share that with planning commissioners since that was requested. Sure thing. And then also, I just had a couple of of more comments quickly. Really, a lot of it based on the planning comments that we've been receiving. And again, you know, trying to get out clarifying information out to the public especially. And then also certainly to the planning commissioners as well, but so Ryan had touched on this just now, but something that planning commission has been doing throughout this whole process, the la- you know, since August of twenty eighteen was was our Udo cop kickoff was really being intentional and looking at all of our existing zone districts and then looking at all of the new potential proposed new zone districts. And seeing where we can, where planning, the planning department and planning commission can you know, push the needle a little bit in terms of offering more more housing opportunities citywide. So I just, we've we've touched on it several times, but I don't think we've been very specific. And that's because we've had all of these conversations, planning commissioners, but that was prior to the public being more engaged. So I I think that it's important just to kind of step back real quick and and let the public know kind of where we've been through very quickly. So C N R Cottage Neighborhood Residential Zone District, C N R, that's new district, which is a rezoning of the properties in that area from R one Zone District, L D R Low Density Residential, proposed to be renamed. Or it's the name to propose for the renaming of the R one Zone District and proposing to allow some two units as a new use. M D R Medium Density Residential, rename of the R two Zone District, proposing to decrease lot sizes required for two units, which is also an existing use already. T N R renaming the R T R N Zone District, decrease lot sizes being proposed required that are required for two, three, or four units, which are also an existing use right now. H D R High Density Residential, rename and combine R three and R five Zone Districts and increase, and what's being proposed is to increase the number of properties that would be allowed for five plus units. So increase the amount of properties into the H D R Zone District. N M U Neighborhood Mixed Use is the rename for C one and for some C five properties. Allow residential in combination with commercial where there would only need to be twenty percent commercial on ground level. So the rest of that could be residential, which is more residential than is permitted right now in the in the C one Zone District. C M U Corridor Mixed Use, rename proposed from C two, allow unlimited units. Not two, which is what's currently allowed in C M U. Or I'm sorry, in C two, as long as meeting the other standards like step bags, height, parking, et cetera. And then R M U Redevelopment Mixed Use, a new Zone District that would allow for two or more units. G M U Greenfield Mixed Use, New Zone District. Rezoning of properties that were like C four and agricultural and P U D, that then have agreements. I Industrial combining I one and I two and the new name also proposing to allow for outlets that could potentially have residential units in Industrial Zone District. Educational really, you know, is just Hope College and Western Seminary at this point, and they're staying the same. A Airport is a new Zone District, rezoned from what the airport currently is, which is agricultural. P U D Plan Unit Development, combination of P U D and P R D. And then also proposing to change the criteria for more mixed use and higher density residential. And then the Form Based Code Zone District, which is a new Zone District. So that's just kind of giving a glimpse that, you know, it is citywide. It happens that our our three main conversations since ever since people got postcards has been on C N R, L D R, and now T N R. But that's only because we've done a whole bunch of work on the other ones as well. It's also because planning commission decided to to notice three buckets of people. So the first being, and and by notice, I mean specifically with mailed postcards. One was the residential properties, one to four units that are being proposed to be rezoned. So anyone that had a res- has a residential property with one to four units that was being proposed to be rezoned from one Zone District to another Zone District were notified, not not from one zoning cha- zoning standard to another zoning standard and not from one zone name to another zone name. But but from one complete Zone District to another complete Zone District, they were they were noticed with a postcard. Also, the properties with higher unit residential properties, so five plus properties, commercial industrial properties that were being proposed to be rezoned to another Zone District, they received a notice. And then the R one properties that are ten thousand square feet or greater, where two units would potentially be allowed at that time, we are calling it upzoning. Now, things have changed in terms of of that criteria. But those are the three buckets of the people that were noticed. So as a note, T N R Properties or R T R N Properties, they did not receive postcards, and they were not supposed to receive postcards because they are not actually being rezoned. They're just being the name is being proposed to change and the zoning and one of the zoning standards is being proposed to to change. Likewise, M D R, the Mixed Density Residential, which is I'm sorry, the Medium Density Residential, which is currently R two, they also did not receive note cards as well as as others that was not actually being rezoned or having a totally new use being proposed.
And that was to notify them as a courtesy, correct? That was not something that we had to do. That was something that we chose to do.
That's correct. Those are complimentary notices. What's legally required to do is for us to notice a public hearing in the Cento. And and that's it, actually, for for rezonings of more than eleven properties. And and what's legally required also is just to have is to have at minimum of one public hearing. And so planning commissioners also decided to have these advisory public hearings in order to get to people before that one public hearing in order to gather more information from the public and let the public know what what was happening. So I also want to clarify then, you know, one more time. Like I was just kind of explaining, the differences between the change in standards of a Zone District versus rezoning versus renaming of a Zone District. And this kind of comes out, you know, we see these no to rezoning signs out and about. And I, you know, it occurs to me that I just want to make sure that the public is aware that that the only rezonings, actual rezonings that are are occurring are like the C N R Zone District and and then these new Zone Districts. And then in some instances, some properties are being proposed to be rezoned to you know, from like R T R N to N M U in some limited circumstances. So and and I think it's just important to understand the semantics, you know, and and at the end of the day, right, we know that what you're saying by those signs and the bumper stickers and and everything is that you're opposed to the changes at all, you know, and and we get that, but I think it's important to understand the terms. Because if, let's say, let's hypothetically say that in the the city council doesn't approve the low density residential, the L D R standards that are being proposed to change for for the A D Us and the attached A D Us and the conversions that we've been calling them as conversions. But that we do still, that that the proposed name change still flies. So people are going to then start seeing that their Zone District name has changed to L D R. But perhaps the standards, the zones, the the standards themselves aren't changed. So there just needs to be a, I think, a larger awareness and, you know, perhaps it is more on staff that we haven't explained that well to the general public from the G I C. From the get go, but I think that there needs to be a greater understanding of what the words mean. And why it's important for us to all be on the same page and be using the words right. So just as some examples again, standards of a zone district proposed to change. So in the R1 Zone District. Which again, you know, LDR is the proposed renaming of that zone district. The attached ADUs and conversions that we're talking about. So that's an example of standards of a zone district proposed to change. And RTRN Zone District being proposed to rename to TNR. A zone, a change in the zone district standards. Is proposed at decreasing the lot sizes. As, as we've been discussing and will continue to discuss today. So those are examples of change in standards of a zone district. A rezoning proposed. A rezoning change, like I mentioned, the CNR Cottage Neighborhood Residential from R1. That's taking properties and, and changing them into a completely different zone district with all different standards. Not one or two different standards, but all different standards. That's a rezoning. Renaming of zone districts proposed, like I just mentioned. R1 to LDR, TRN to TNR, C2 to CMU. That's just taking the name and changing the name of. Of the zone district itself. Hopefully that, that clarifies a little bit. And then a couple of other semantics, so Unified Development Ordinance, we keep seeing, you know, say no to Udo or say no to the Udo proposal. Now, the Udo proposal, we need to be clear, is a much larger document. It has about 300 pages, it has all of these different standards. Including what we've been talking about, which is. The, um, the standards that are being proposed to change for, for specific zone districts. So I wanted to be known that even if Udo passes. With all of this other great stuff that's in it. And the standards don't pass, that doesn't mean that, that, that you weren't listened to. Or, you know, vice versa. It's, Udo is, is a much greater document, it's not. You know, limited to what specifically we've been talking about in the last couple of, of days. And I would really, or the last couple of months, I should say. And I'd really encourage everybody to go onto our website, hollandudo.com. We now have a formatted version on our, on our website. And to just really take a look at everything that the Planning Commission has done. For the city and go, and proposing for, to go forward. So I've already talked about this, so I'll skip that, the no to rezoning signs. Upzoning, again, you know, I had, I had apologized for using that technical term. It really didn't mean positive because it says up, it's a technical term. And again, I apologize for using it, but it really was used only because it defines exactly what was being proposed. And lastly, this duplex versus conversion, or what the mayor has now been referring to as a conversion ADU. Which is another great possible name for this. What we've tried to do is. Is try to express two different things. It happens that people are absolutely correct when they say, you know, a duplex is, a conversion is a duplex. Or can be a duplex, and, and that's correct. But what we're trying to say here is that. Is that there's two different. Uses that are allowed in different zone districts. There's a duplex, which for instance is allowable in the TNR Zone District. Currently, if you have a 9,600 square foot property with a 60 foot width lot. And you meet the setback requirements and everything else, parking, et cetera. You could build a duplex. And when you Google duplex, you see all of these. Examples, so you can see that all of these examples show two doors. They, it's clear that they're a duplex, they were built as a duplex. So that is, is what Planning Commission was originally talking about, but now has changed. Course to say that what they're really talking about. Are either attached ADUs, which I'm going to kind of scroll down real quickly. For attached ADUs, which is something that could be like a lesser unit. Than the principal structure, but attached. Or. Duplexes or that are owner occupied. That don't, that were not built separately like these other ones are, where you can tell that they're duplexes, that they're two units. That's basically a single family home that has been converted. So there's the conversion into two different units. And so if someone else in the public can come up with, or the planning commissioners, or, you know, we should probably settle on a name. For what we're trying to do here, because like I said, the semantics are important. Staff has just started calling them conversions. But, uh, you know, like I said, the mayor has called them. And his responses to people, a conversion ADU. Which is basically that this has to go through all of those. Meet all of those different criteria that a normal duplex would not have to meet. And that, and that's where we're trying to specify that, that difference. Not try to like pull wool up, you know, over someone's eyes and be like. Wow, we're not, you know, really being truthful here. We are trying to be truthful, we're just trying to explain two different, two different uses. Did you want to say something, Brooke?
Maybe you said this, then I just missed it, but the conversion piece of it is the footprint of the house does not change. Duplex is obvious two units in addition on to the primary structure. Or it is built, you know, let's say a house burns down, it's built as two separate pieces, whether it's on top of each other or next to.
Exactly.
But a conversion is converting a single family home and not changing the primary structure at all, the footprint. You couldn't even tell maybe if it's a, if it's a duplex or a single family.
Right, exactly. And specifically putting in criteria that says that you cannot make exterior changes. Except for potentially adding on a side door or a back door. So you wouldn't even be able to do what, you know, they do here and put on a, another door in the front here.
Jenna, I don't want to, I don't want to derail you, thank you for giving me credit for the conversion. ADU language, that was just me struggling to try to explain to people what the difference is between the two. I'm not married to that term in any way at all. If anybody else can come up with an easy to understand terminology for the public. So that they understand what the difference is between what I think a lot of people are calling a duplex. And that conversion term, I, I think confuses people just saying conversion, that's why I added that on there. But I'm, I'm just trying to look for some clarity and, uh, so if there, if somebody's got a great idea, I'm all for it. Thank you for clarifying all of that, sorry to talk over you.
No, absolutely, thank you. I mean, I, again, that's exactly what we're trying to do too, is, is we wanted to be clear. You know, we, we understand that there's confusion, we understand that all of this is very, very confusing. And so we, we certainly want to get the words right. And yes, planning commissioners, you know, and the public, you know, if the public wants to. Reach out and, and give some suggestions as well, that would be more than welcome. As to what we just refer to these as. And then lastly, you know, I, we've been getting a lot of emails and, and we've, we've talked about this several times. But, um, you know, one, one more time, I guess. That, you know, there, there's a lot of talk about how, you know, we don't want changes in our single family zone district. And I, and I think it just needs to be clarified one more time that currently any. Any single family home in any zone district throughout the city. Can have a, a detached accessory dwelling unit built on again. If they meet the parking standards, if they meet the setbacks, et cetera, et cetera. But a, a accessory dwelling unit is already permitted anywhere. So. You know, so, so the point being that your single family zone district is not actually a single family zone district. As it stands now, and, and I think that that just should be. You know, become more apparent to people. Just in this whole conversation that we're having. And that was like five years ago, since we allowed them. We have about five that were built. And to our knowledge, none of them are actually being rented out, they're all being used for. Family, extra family space. But they are technically allowable. And, and we, we think that that's largely due to construction costs. And then just again, to clarify the, in, in terms of the attached ADUs. That's where the, there's the proposal to allow for attached ADUs. When meeting all of this criteria that we talked about just now. So that is basically what I have, I mean, I, I also just have the why, you know, just, there's been a lot of talk about this. Why are you trying to do this? I think Ryan Kilpatrick has answered that several times very eloquently. As, as our, you know, housing expert basically that we rely on. But just as a quick walkthrough again. To increase housing supply throughout the city and all areas of the city. Increase housing choice throughout the city, especially in walkable locations, increase opportunities for residents. To potentially subdivide their homes to generate income. Make less homes legally not conforming, there's a lot of homes that already have more than one unit on them. But because of the zone standards, they're not actually legally conforming. Which means that if they were to burn down, they wouldn't be able to be rebuilt. And then respond to the fact that household sizes has changed and therefore housing supply needs to change as well. So with that, unless any planning commissioners have any questions for me on that or for Mark. We can get into the public comment.
I don't have any questions, Jenna, but thank you for that information.
Yes, thank you.
So I'll turn this over to you then, Brooke and Mallory.
We are the team. All right, are you going to put the schedule on as well, Jenna? We'll share your screen for the, if you want to. Otherwise, those in the public, you can also look on the City of Holland website and find our schedule on there. At this time, we will be opening our time for public comment. And when it is your turn, please state your name and address for the record. And when I call on you, Mallory will unmute you. And then you will also have to give her, give permission to be unmuted, so it's kind of a two-step process there. So you can raise your hand digitally, or you can raise your hand on the video as well. Warren Wortley. You will have two minutes to speak. There you go, Warren, you should be good.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Jay, I go by Jay, Jay Wortley, I live at 311 West 12th Street. I'm a retired chief economist for Michigan State Government. And listening to Ryan's presentation, very interesting. But one clear observation is that it was a very, very limited scope of time. As an economist, you'd look at a much broader period of time, the economy is very dynamic. Things change, there are cycles up and down. You look at a four or five year period or six year period. And you could be looking at just either an up, an upswing or a downswing in activity. If you're making long-term changes based on a, a little window of, of activity. And those changes are going to have lasting impacts and maybe not full impacts until 10 or 15 years or five, 10, 15 years from now. You're, you're setting yourself up for trouble. Making changes now, when you're reacting to a slow or a, a, a cycle, temporary change in the economy. Again, you're just, you're asking, you're asking for trouble, so I'd be very careful about that. He also talked about wants and how people want to live in walkable neighborhoods. Yeah, well, there's a lot of wants that we all like, I'd love to have property on Lake Michigan or Lake Makatawa. I'm sure lots of people would like to have property in this neighborhood where we live. And the market is working. Ryan's data showed that, that people wanted homes, single family homes, we've been swinging towards single family homes. There was a shortage of rental units, the market's working. We're getting a bunch of rental units coming online here in the next year or two. So be careful, when you're trying to art smart the, the, the market. Again, you can, you can get into, into trouble. My last comment is that. My wife is here with me and, and she'd like her two minutes of comments also.
Hi, I'm Mary Wortley, 311 West 12th Street. Just a couple of things, I've been very dismayed at a lot of the comments that I've been seeing online. And, and elsewhere on both sides of the UDO proposal. One of them. Supporters of the UDO. Strongly emphasize affordable housing. And I've been disappointed that the people that I've seen that have been participating online from the Planning Commission. Have not corrected this because you yourselves have stated that this is not about affordable housing. Yet that myth continues to abound. Second thing is walkable neighborhoods. I'm a walker, I love your vision for walkable neighborhoods. Holland is not set up for walkable neighborhoods. And I think you need to consider this now because it requires investment on the city's part to get a walkable neighborhood. We don't have public transportation that is dependable and available. You want to limit cars to one per rental unit, if I remember correctly. People are going to need public transportation to get to grocery stores, which we don't have locally. I want to personally say, I can vouch for this one, your city sidewalks are in terrible condition. I've fallen, I'm a healthy, active individual, I've fallen multiple times from hitting my foot on uneven pavement. I've notified the city of the last time, but I didn't make a claim. However, the damage to my foot is severe enough and irreparable. That I now need to wear a brace when I walk. And I've walked, I've fallen in all different parts of the core central city neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mary. Jenna, I just want to clarify, we have a minimum standard of one car per rental unit, correct? Oh, you're muted, hold on.
Yes, Brooke.
One, one per unit, period, it doesn't matter whether or not it's rental or not.
So it's a minimum, they can have more, we're not limiting it to one car per unit. Okay. Got it, and I think we have said multiple times that this is not about affordable housing. So once again, we will just reiterate that, so we don't even need to discuss that, the ODO does not address that. We've talked about it. Making some housing hopefully more affordable, not about affordable housing for low-income residents. And Dale Hoskins. Mallory's going to unmute you Dale, just a second, there we go, that should be good.
May I share my screen, I got a little PowerPoint.
Nope, not right now, I don't think so, I think you can present that to. I think you can present that to anyone, to the Planning Commission, and they will disseminate it to the Planning Commissioners.
Okay, it seems sad that I can't communicate in an effective way like your consultants can. Okay.
Standard, actually. The public comment, if you wanna disseminate the information ahead of time, then we can have that as public comment and it can be online. But not during the meeting, but it has to be before. So you can give that to us now and we can have it ready for the next meeting.
Okay, but regardless, I wouldn't be able to talk while my PowerPoint's being showed. Okay.
You would be able to if you had given it to us ahead of time.
Okay, well, that's, thanks to know. Good to know. I've enjoyed living in Holland. I hope my two minutes just started.
State your name and address, please, and I have not started your two minutes until after you state your name and address.
Thanks. Dale Hoskins, 262 West 12th. I've enjoyed living in Holland and up until recently have enjoyed watching the leaders of our city make changes, change after change that enhance our city's vitality. I brag to outsiders about our city. However, there are many red flags in this issue that's compelled me to invest many hours researching this complex ordinance. I knew how many pages this was. It's amazing. I'm not retired and I would have preferred to continue entrusting, to trust the city to, this issue to the city's leadership. There are at least two widespread misunderstandings of, of the benefits of it. And you just clarified one and thank you for that. It will create more affordable housing. It won't. It's not designed for that, as you said nicely. But my point here is the other one. It will enhance the city's environmental sus- and sustainability, environmental sustainability and resilience goals. People need the means and incentives to drive less. Having a mini mart to buy beer and chips 10 blocks away does not make the neighborhood walkable. And that's what I think this mixed-use thing is gonna do is it's just gonna give little mini marts more often. We need to be intentional about putting green grocers in the mixed-use zones and we need to put an expanded public transportation on the table. I've heard no discussion about that. Public transportation helps more people get to work, make more money, and help, and lower people's monthly financial commitment and raise what they would consider officially affordable housing. In many ways, the UDO is brilliant. It combines so many things. It's user-friendly. It's a regulatory document, but no, no matter how much user-friendly you make it, if it's as big as it is, it's a lot of work. I like your hybrid zoning, the four zoning types, and you state each of these have different levels of attention on each zoning element. My fear is not semantics. It is the consequences of the words. I believe this ODO has many features that will adversely impact my neighborhood. I have a no rezoning sign, but I don't know what to put on it that would tell you what you need to hear and what you need to change. So I just have the one sign that's available. So forgive my semantic failure there. Unfortunately, in the ODO, the TNR and other conventional neighborhoods will adversely impact from an environmental and sustainability perspective. And it looks like I'm out of time. Read the green. Everybody read landscaping and green infrastructures. It's got wonderful stuff in there and our ODO will not do that to my neighborhood.
Thank you, Dale. I see Jeff. There we go. That should be good, Jeff.
How's that? Good?
Yep.
Okay. My name's Jeff Beer. I live 194 West 11th Street in the home that my wife and I purchased more than 25 years ago. With regard to the proposed UDO TR, two in the TNR ordinance, I'm not sure what best to refer to it. I'd like to encourage the commission to consider a couple of things. My first issue applies only to the historic district. I can't really speak to what's happening in other neighborhoods of the city or certainly within tries. I don't live there. But I do live in the historic district and I have for 25 years. First, I'd, I'd like to encourage you to seek a formal opinion from the Holland Historic District Commission on the potential impact of the zoning changes you proposed. Maybe that's already been done, but I haven't seen it. I haven't heard anybody talk about it. As you probably know, the Holland Historic District was created more than 30 years ago and the commission has the authority to approve changes to a home or its site within the district through project review and the issuing of a certificate of appropriateness. The Historic District Commission relies on principles created by the Secretary of Interior. And those principles are created to help preserve the distinctive character of a historic building and its site. The commission requires homeowners to recognize the physical record of their home's time, place, and use. They govern things, things as small as design and color and craftsmanship and materials. I've had five projects approved by the District Commission since I moved into the district. I'm highly supportive of their goals and the efforts of the commission. It requires more time, more money, and more work at the homeowner. I'd only ask the same of the Planning Commission. Let's be sure that what you're proposing is consistent with the goals of the commission and what they've been requiring of homeowners for the past 34 years. Here's what the first standard reads. A property shall be used for its historic purpose or be placed in a new use that requires minimal change to the defining characteristics of the building and its site and environment. Please ask the HHDC to weigh in on their perceived impact of the ordinances that you're providing, proposing for the historic district. I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Yes, as I'm standing, we have someone standing down our floors right now in our 1905 historic district home. All right. Denise Hooksama. There you go, Denise.
Can you hear me? Cause I didn't get a request to unmute.
Yep, it looks good. We can hear you.
And before we start, I just, I don't understand. I don't, I wanna make sure we're under, okay with protocol. There are three members of our household. Our issues are all kind of combined. And is it okay if one of us speaks for all three of us, but yet we have the extended time based on three people so that we don't chop everything up?
Denise, is it okay if I give you four minutes? Should that be sufficient?
A minute should be sufficient, yes. So this is the Hooksama family. We reside at 17 West 13th Street. And I just wanna say thanks for including on the agenda today some of the concerns regarding NMU neighborhood mixed-use buildings also. The master plan refers to mixed-use neighborhood development areas. It says that these areas are along busier streets near existing residential neighborhoods where new development is permitted and encouraged. The site design in these areas indicate that buildings should be sited at or close to sidewalks. These lots in the central area of the city seem to be located directly along Michigan and River Avenue. Lots proposed as NMU properties are not in this mixed-use development area. They are in the neighborhood preservation area. The master plan says that these areas are neighborhoods where existing development patterns and characters should be preserved and enhanced over time. They are well-established and generally consist of residential and small-scale neighborhood commercial uses. Redevelopment and infill development should preserve or reflect the existing character of the neighborhood. The master plan also talks about neighborhood commercial nodes as small neighborhood commercial nodes that exist within Holland's primary residential neighborhoods. Most of these neighborhood nodes have been in existence for decades and are well-integrated into the fabric of the community. Generally, their character and scale complement surrounding residential development. We have no problem with commercial mixed-use buildings existing within our neighborhoods. And as the master plan indicates, the existing buildings are well-integrated and complement our neighborhoods. As long as current buildings remain, even if the use changes, there is no concern. Our concern is what would be allowed under the proposed changes that, and it may actually encourage existing buildings to be torn down and replaced with something that takes advantage of the proposed standard changes. When it comes to these standards, our concerns include setbacks should not be any closer to sidewalks than what is allowed for surrounding buildings. Proposed setbacks with a minimum of two feet will place new buildings significantly closer to the sidewalks than the surrounding residential buildings within the TNR zones. Within other residential zones, the discrepancy will be even greater. Second, our concern with the height change for NMU properties being increased from 35 feet to 40 feet. The trend for new mixed-use commercial buildings is to have flat roofs. And increasing the height will allow for new builds to be full three, possibly four-story buildings with flat roof lines. Concern is that the scale of a full three or four-story building may overpower the buildings adjacent and currently in place. Third, currently, there is no infill review proposed for NMU properties. Without infill, what is in place to ensure that their character and scale complement surrounding residential development and preserve or reflect the existing character of the neighborhood? We are not asking for commercial mixed-use buildings to look like a house. But there is no reason why the outside appearance cannot be designed to blend in with neighboring properties. Some type of infill review would ensure that all buildings in residential neighborhoods work together. Again, our concern is not what happens when an existing building is torn down. We are concerned with what happens when a, when it is torn down and a new building is proposed. This will happen and has already happened. Last year, the commission reviewed a new building proposed for 317 Central. Residents voiced concern, not related to its proposed use, but regarding the scale and placement of the building and its impact on the neighborhood. The decision to approve this project seemed to be based on, well, that's what the zoning is allowed and there's nothing we can do about it. For some reason, the developer chose not to move forward with the approved plan. The existing structure was removed and the property is now vacant. If ODO is adopted, it is possible that a new plan will be presented and the developer will be able to take advantage of the new proposed standards, which would allow a full three, maybe four-story, flat-roofed building set two feet from the sidewalk with no review of the character of the building. As a resident, we are concerned that this scenario will be played out in any of the, the numerous NMU properties in the city. Please do not place this commission or future commissions in the position to have to approve a plan because, well, that's what zoning allows and there's nothing we can do about it. Please, now is your chance to do something about it. We also appreciate the second look at the Hope overlay boundaries. While there may only be 20 properties within the area between River and Central, there are several rentals which have consistently been used by students and two Hope-owned houses. So this area seems to be a desirable location for Hope student use. Boundaries of this area should be determined by student use as well as the distance from the campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenna? Or Mark? How many feet tall is a house in the historic district allowed to be?
Right now.
I know, 45.
TRN district allows 45 feet, I believe.
So a home can be 45 feet tall?
Yeah, yeah. And the peak of the house then could actually be taller than that because the height is determined kind of on the averaging of the, of the roof line.
Okay, so it, it can't be four stories. Like a commercial building could not be four stories.
Likely, I mean, usually what Dan Tiley would say is that a story is about 10 feet. Though generally, the first story is generally higher than 10 feet. You know, and then you have to, you know, figure out like the, the width of the, the boards and the construction materials, et cetera, et cetera. But I guess technically at 40 feet, it could be four, four stories.
But four stories wouldn't be any taller than the houses that are in that neighborhood.
Correct.
Are allowed, houses allowed in that neighborhood. Okay. Just curious.
And, and we do have, that zone district is, you know, has the tallest height allowance right now. I mean, it does encapsulate the historic district. And, you know, a lot of the architectural elements on the homes, there's a lot of steep-pitched homes, you know, so that perhaps, you know, if we had it at 35 feet, some of those homes probably would become non-conforming. So, I mean, so that additional 10 feet to 45 feet is really kind of based on, because that was really kind of what you're getting with some architectural elements and, and the homes were, were bigger. I mean, some of the, the more historic homes were a lot bigger back 100 years ago or so.
And more than one story in, in general.
Exactly.
Okay. Dwayne Coiers. There we go.
Actually, I originally put my hand up to try to unshear Jenna's screen, but. But anyway. 89 West 12th Street. I did it right this time, I think.
Yes.
Isn't it nice hearing something about someone other than the residential screaming about how many duplexes we got? Yeah, residential, traditional neighborhood. I don't know where you've sat with the if you have, have come up to any conclusions yet on how to address that duplex question. I'm assuming that's still in the thought process amongst your commission.
TRN?
The TRN, yeah. You're talking about piloting and how many lots could convert and what kind of control you might be able to put on those. I'm assuming that's still in the discussion stage amongst your commission.
That's on the agenda for today.
Yep, it's on the agenda for tonight.
For tonight.
Yep, right now.
Well, I guess my, my biggest objection there is just that when you target that low-dollar amount for conversion into a duplex, you tend to target that towards investor and that takes that ability to purchase that house away from a homeowner to use for your own equity building. So it's a shift of, of property from homeownership to investor ownership. And that's kind of my biggest push there. The other one is just simply the number of houses you have in the neighborhood that become multifamily. Some blocks have more, some have less. Be nice to not have a whole block full. That way you're just trying to maintain again, a mix through the neighborhood. And if you start counting units, you start counting by how many lots carry multifamilies or how many housing units are pushed in that area. I bring mine up because I have a non-conforming fourplex across the street. So if you, if you count units, we've got a, a street that's got 38% rental on it. And if you count lots, you've got about a 20% occupation. So which number would you use to cook?
Thank you.
Just throwing out there for you.
All right. Mark, are, are fourplexes allowed in the TNR?
They are.
Are duplexes allowed in the TNR right now?
Yes, they are. And three families too.
Okay. Based on lot size.
Yes.
All right. Stacy Heard. There we go.
My name is Stacy Heard. I live at 230 West 11th Street. And throughout this process, I've tried to remain civil and stay away from inflammatory accusations. I remind myself that the people I disagree with are good people with good hearts. However, this past week has proved that the people of Holland are being lied to and that some will change their words as needed to gain support for their position. And that makes me very angry. I'm gonna state a couple quoted facts that I've pulled from the article on housing featured on the front page of Sunday's paper and then compare those with mistruths that have been fed to us over the past several months. Number one, we are not struggling for inventory anymore, direct quote. However, Planning Commission keeps telling us we need to increase housing supply at every price point. That is a lie. As studied by Housing Next, we actually have an access of 270 units in the middle income bracket and an access of 380 units in the upper income bracket. The only missing housing segment is in the lower income bracket. The why this push to increase density. Fact two, we need to shift our focus away from large multifamily projects and towards single-family homes. Kilpatrick said, what's really unique about Ottawa County is that we have more homeowners that are overburdened than we do renters. Planning Commission tells us increasing housing options will drive prices down. That is also a lie. Reducing the supply of single-family homes will only serve to continue to drive prices up, which will make homeownership unattainable for many, especially those in the lower income bracket who will be unable to pay above-market rate on a home. My fellow citizens, do not allow yourself to be intimidated into compliance by accusations of racism, NIMBYism, or unchristianness, or by lofty academic language. The issue is simple economics. Increasing density is not needed. More million-dollar condos downtown are not needed. The only housing that is needed is lower-income housing. Increasing rentals with home conversions will not meet that need. It will create additional problems by making homeownership for lower and middle-income levels out of reach. So I'm angry because the message I'm receiving is that my voice does not matter. We have invested so much into making our neighborhood a better place, but if these radical changes are forced through, we will fearfully, since they're leaving Holland.
Um, Mark, was Ryan talking about prices going down in rentals possibly if we have more available?
Yes, that, that, that was brought up. If we had more supply, um, there, I mean, we don't know for sure what's going to happen, but, uh, certainly, um, pressure would be taken off and, uh, one would hope that, uh, prices would be able to come down a little bit.
Or at least.
The rate of increase slows, you know?
Exactly, okay. And it wasn't just homeowners, it was also rental prices. Right, and he.
Clear.
Louise?
Oh, she's, because she's saying some facts on there, well, she's saying the facts from the Holland send though. I was just curious where those, those facts are coming from.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, from an article on Sunday, I heard.
Yes.
Okay. I'll take a look. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Keith Jones. There we go.
Hi, Keith Jones, uh, seven nine six Papa Drive. And I want to address the, um, the semantics regarding the rezoning. Because I don't know if you realize, but you've got sixteen acres between Papa Drive and Chicago Drive that's currently zoned as agriculture. But you're rezoning it to L D R. And those properties don't have a discernible roadway for access. And back in two thousand five, two thousand six, the, um, the residents of, uh, Papa Drive fought a development that wanted to put mixed-use, high-density, um, residential in those properties. So Jenna is not, not mentioning or doesn't realize that you've got sixteen acres of basically swamp according to the D E Q. And I have the D E Q report from that, from that proposal back in two thousand six that you won't be able to develop those properties in the size of lots that you're considering because you have to mitigate for, for, it's a swamp area. And so that's what I'm opposed to is taking this entire sixteen-acre, um, piece of land from agriculture, which is currently agriculture, to L D R. If you're truly upzoning properties, you should take agriculture to, what, what is it, open space? Would that be the upzone terminology then? So I'm opposed to take, making this sweeping change citywide. My preference would be if a homeowner wants to build a duplex or change their property or rearrange their property, deal with that on an individual basis, exactly like we did it back in two thousand five when the, um, hello, or came and submitted a proposal, the neighbors waited on it. And we have a voice for those kind of changes. Because you have sixteen acres with no discernible roadway in and out of it unless you take one of those properties and, and change it into a roadway.
Thank you, Keith.
Keith, can you do us a favor and email your concern to planningcomment@cityofholland.com? Um, and we can, we can, uh, respond directly to you.
Keith, that message was for you. Um, email those concerns about that property to planningcomment@cityofholland.com. Right, Jenna? Okay, planningcomment@cityofholland.com. Melanie. Beckman. There you go.
Sorry. My name is Melanie Beckman. I'm at two zero nine West twelfth Street. Um, I just want to say a couple of things to the planning commission. I want to thank you today for what I thought was serious effort in actually, you know, really bringing us on this thing. You addressed so many of the, uh, questions, the concerns, the fears, um, the confusion, the frustration, at least for me. I felt like I could see that there was purpose in the meeting that you had for us today. Um, I felt like you, uh, along with Ryan, actually, um, wanted to make sure that a lot of what we had asked, a lot of what we had brought forward was addressed. And I want to thank you because I felt heard. Um, I hope that others are feeling heard too, and also for the delay, um, in the decision-making and allowing for this time for us to, um, be felt heard. And it, it, it has made a huge difference, I think. Um, so I want to thank you for that, um, especially in these times when things are so, you know, this just is how it's been for the last year or so, right? So anyway, I, I do appreciate that effort. I could tell that it was information you all had already known. Obviously, nothing was new for you and it was new for us and that was why it was there and I just want to thank you for doing that. Um, and I do appreciate that. So, thanks.
Thanks, Melanie. Uh, Lisa. Caston, Lisa Caston.
Hi.
Yes.
Lisa Caston, okay, Lisa Caston, two zero six West eleventh street. I was not planning to speak today, but I wanted to answer a couple of questions that came up in a couple of comments. I also appreciate the process of going over the information today. It was very helpful. Uh, Louise just asked where Stacy Heard got the quotes that she was, um, offering. They were on the Sunday, February fourteen Sentinel and it was direct quotes from Ryan Kilpatrick, so you can refer back to that article. Um, but they were right from Ryan himself, just so everyone is clear. Um, the thing I wanted to clarify, Jenna was great in researching those, um, developer hometown development, the letter and the text that people have been getting. I understand what they told her, but facts are, the people who got the hometown letters, they are already remodeled, which Jenna stated, great houses. The process of flipping means you buy a property, put as little money into it in order to gain a profit. If the house is already remodeled, then you're not going to gain a higher profit. So I don't believe that argument. The other thing, the text message, converting multifamily to single-family, the people that got those texts, they're all single-family homes. That's also a lie. So just so you're aware, the people who have been approaching people, they're not meeting up with fact. Um, I wanted to thank, uh, Mayor Box for his comments about the preservation of single-family homes. And he asked, you know, so you're saying we should be preserving that? I felt like a light bulb is starting to flicker there, so thank you for asking great questions because that's exactly what we've all been trying to say, is we don't want to shut people out of this existing housing market, single-family downtown walkable that need this housing. So thank you very much for the great questions and dialogue today.
Thank you, Lisa. All right. The disadvantage of doing these at home is that your five-year-old can walk in and ask if he can watch TV. I'm sorry about that. That was a distraction. All right, looks good. You and Jenna, I will send it over to you for the Unified Development Ordinance items under, under item four of our agenda.
Brooke, I think you've still got Linda Falstad.
Oh, I just noticed that too. I was script, going through the pages. And I didn't see any, and I don't think Melanie did too at the time. Okay. You Linda Falstad, Melanie?
Mallory, sorry. There we go.
Okay, I'm Linda Falstad and I live at one fifty-two Birchwood. And I too want to thank you for this process, for extending the process. Um, I encourage you to listen to your public. I think that what you're looking at here is changes in standards. I'm, I'm not too concerned about what you call my zone, whether it's our one or whether it's, you know, some other name, whatever creative name someone comes up with. What I'm concerned about are the standards. Uh, my husband and I purchased our home in a single-family neighborhood. We love our neighborhood. We have people in our neighborhood who have an A D U. We have families with multiple generations living in their home and I love where I live. Um, I'm not sure, listening to Ryan's, you know, presentation today, that we need to provide any other opportunities within our city limits. I think that we have a balance right now of what we need. And I also want to remind Planning Commission that you're looking at a huge change here. You're looking at changing from functional zoning to intensity zoning. And I'm wondering if that shouldn't be put to a vote of the community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Linda. I truly did not mean to talk over you or think that you weren't there. Just didn't see you on the page there. All right.
Hey, are there any other?
I don't think so. Great.
I'll bring up the staff report now for the T N R analysis.
Brooke, I hate to be the old man in the group, but could we take a quick five-minute break?
No problem. I realized last time we didn't take a break and it was like three hours.
About killed me.
I'm sorry, yes.
I will be much more attentive with a five-minute break.
Okay, go ahead, get your drink of coffee. Go ahead.
Some of us are not afraid to stand up and go take care of that. And Mallory, thank you when the dog barks, uh, I can't help it.
Well, Mallory has a dog, so I think she can relate. She gets it.
I understand, yes.
Well, thank you. And Brooke, so you have a five-year-old, I have a ten-year-old.
Seriously.
He just wants to jump on my lap.
Well, that's better than your five-year-old. Ah, yeah. I keep trying to point him out the door and upstairs, go ask dad, but it didn't work.
All right, here we go.
I got the same. I have my three-year-old coming in, she stands at the doorway, so I, I, I learned, I just say TV time is okay during this time. We don't do it during the week, but right now, it's okay.
Exactly. I know, my husband works from home too and it's, it's a challenge, that's for sure. And then people sanding our floors on top of it.
Fortunately, we were able to move out when we did that.
It's just our dining room and entryway, but, you know.
See, our house from, literally from the kitchen door to the front of the house is just all flooring. Actually, in both bedrooms, but.
Oh, yeah.
You'll love this. Had green carpet everywhere when I bought it.
We had neighbors on eighteenth street that had that and they ripped up all that carpet from the forties and fifties. And there was beautiful hardwoods underneath. Yep, we ripped up our carpet and they're sanding it down now, but that's the last of it. They won't be able to sand it down again after this, so we're trying to preserve what we have.
I have a feeling we're almost to that point. We've done it twice now and we've always had dogs.
Oh, yeah. Well, four kids. You got a dog, two dogs?
Yeah, but you keep the kids' nails trimmed.
Yeah, we make them wear socks or shoes. That's, that's usually the case. We do not have pets.
Back on the historic district's roof heights, I thought it was thirty-five to the middle of the roof. But Dan Tiley wasn't here, so.
I don't know. I, I think the, the peak is higher, though.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They have so many houses, they're so tall.
Yep.
Got to show off, but, yep, that's a.
Thanks, Andy. That's very nice.
You got that in your five-minute break?
No, it got delivered to me.
No way.
Yeah, how spoiled am I?
By your wife or one of your kids?
By my wife.
Nice. How many drivers do you have in your house, Andy?
Hmm, six.
Oh, there's six of you, all six of you can drive. Wow.
Wow. So what do you do for parking?
Uh, the car shuffle, but three of them don't live here anymore, so there's only three of us now, but yeah. So, yeah, it's a lot.
Okay, we're waiting for Andrew. Is that, is that actually your background, Andy, or is that like?
I am in my, um, daughter's bedroom that is now a storage place. So, and, and an R C car garage. You can't see that around me, but there's like five R C cars in half-disassembled states.
Now, is that your hobby or, or one of your?
It's, it, it started as mine and then my son, uh, has taken over the torch and has destroyed my hobby and he is way beyond.
I believe. I bet they go, I bet they go faster.
Seventy-two miles an hour, so, a little scary.
My son will take one of those off your hands for you.
Yeah, it's fast.
All right, we have everybody. We have Chris on here too.
Um, I did just hear that someone had a question about, for Dan, and I did just see that he is on the call. I don't know whether or not he's able to talk. Maybe he's like on his way home. Um, but I'm asking him to unmute, but there's been no response.
Hello?
There's Dan.
I am driving.
Okay, well, you, you can, uh, what is it, uh, maximum roof height in the, uh, in the historic district? I thought it was thirty-five to the center of the roof.
No, it's forty-five to the center of the roof.
Okay.
And I don't know, I don't know that we have many houses that meet that height. Because even if they had twelve-foot ceilings on three floors, they're only at thirty-six feet. So I don't think.
How many feet out of the ground are you?
Normally, a historic house is about thirty-two inches out of the ground.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Yep, bye.
What you getting ready for us, Jenna?
Okay, so here is the report, uh, which you saw last week. Um, it's just been updated slightly. Um, the only update really is that it's been added, a map has been added. Um, an additional map was requested, um, that depicts where all of the rentals are um, that are located in the R T R N Zone District, uh, and then a breakdown of them by number of units. So that information, that's actually the, the last map in the packet. Um, my thought is, is to do one of two things. Either, um, planning commissioners, if you're at the point where, you know, you can just kind of, uh, have your own conversation, um, about these different options, we can do that. Um, or I can quickly go through, um, go through the options potentially again. Um, I know that at least one planning commissioner had a question as to how to read, uh, these tables specifically um, in terms of, of what the standards, you know, that would be. So, so maybe I could just touch on that just real quickly, which is that the, the standards that as written into the Udo uh, would be just what the square foot, uh, per unit would be. That would be allowable. Now, if, for, if planning commissioners decided that for two units, they wanted it to be, say, with the forty-eight hundred square feet per unit and three units, uh, for the three thousand two hundred fifty square feet unit. So you can either do it per unit or you can direct staff to write it, um, per, you know, just what the total square footage is, right? So per two unit, you would need to have nine thousand six hundred square feet of, uh, area, uh, lot area, um, or you can say four thousand eight hundred square feet. It's, it's up to you as to how you want to direct staff to write it. Um, so really, the, the, the actions themselves, yes?
One quick one, because when you talk about per unit, you're talking about if you have a four unit, could we, that would be sixty, or ninety-six hundred square feet per building, yes?
No. So we're talking about lot area, not building area. We're talking about the lot area. Yeah. So like, existing right now, for two, three, four units, you need to have four thousand eight hundred square feet of lot area per unit. So that means, in actuality, you need to have at least a nine thousand six hundred square foot lot to have a two unit. Then if you go down to three unit options, you need to have at least a fourteen thousand four hundred square foot lot for three units. And then at least nineteen thousand two hundred square foot lot for four units. So that's the question that we're talking about specifically, the lot size.
It's a tongue twister, because you say per unit.
Right.
And you're talking about a four unit, so does that mean it's four times that? No, that's the number you need for that particular building.
Yeah. Does everyone else understand that?
No, I do, but it is confusing.
I mean, I understand it, but it's confusing. And why can't?
So what I'm saying is that you don't necessarily need to do something per unit. You could clarify that and just say simply that your lot needs to be, as an example, ninety-six hundred square feet total in order to have two units.
Right, so why don't you just say nine-six hundred square foot lot and take out the per unit?
Yeah, it's up to you. It's up to you all as Planning Commissioners. Just, I'm telling you how it's written now. As it's written now, that's how it's written. So, you can either keep it as it's written or not. But, and then I just want to go through just to explain that the actual language of the standard would only be this, you know, these first two. So it'd either be, you know, the size of the lot and the width of the lot, or the total. And that's the actual standard. Those are the options. What is provided here in addition to that information is the external, you know, factors. Like, so if you have that in this situation, then that means that a hundred and seventy-one properties are eligible for two units under those standards.
Yep. Can you mute the phone one?
I think that's Louise.
Is it? Oh, no. Really?
Because he was calling in, yeah.
It is Louise, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, Louise, sorry, there was feedback, so if you... Not exactly sure what to do. I guess we can...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
I don't want to derail the conversation of the minutia of how we describe this, but I've got a suggestion for a potential change in TRN that I want to throw out there as a proposal. And please feel free to push back, because I haven't talked to anybody about this at all. And then includes Jenna and Mark. If this is something that would not be functionally, we'd functionally be able to do. Here's my thought and then my explanation of it. My thought is, in regard to rentals only, we keep the language exactly the same as it is now, the standards exactly the same as they are now, meaning the lot sizes, regardless of how we actually describe that. But for the smaller lot sizes that we have changed, that we're proposing, that we require an owner occupancy requirement on that. And that, so we say, we keep the standards the same as we're proposing now for the change, but we say there has to be an owner occupancy component there. At least one of the units, like we did with accessory dwelling units, at least one of the units must be owner occupied. And I think that that addresses a lot of the concerns that we're hearing from the public. Public's concerned about developers being interested in coming in and buying up these properties and turning them into rentals. Well, if it's owner occupied, that's not going to happen. Because no developer is going to be doing that on a grand scale. You have to live there in order for it to be able to happen. We've talked a lot about the value of homeownership and the ability to be able to get people into neighborhoods and into houses that might not be able to get into houses. This can create an opportunity for a first-time homebuyer, young couple, who's looking and saying, "I might not be able to afford to buy a traditional single-family home in that neighborhood, but if I buy a multi-unit one and I live in part of it, I can have the rental as the other part of it and subsidize my mortgage that way." I really like the idea that Ryan Kilpatrick mentioned at City Council before, and we talked a little bit about tonight, about multi-units, but all, but one, but they're condominiums. So you've got what may be a two-family or a three-family unit, but each one of them is owner occupied. I also like the idea that it creates the opportunity for entrepreneurship, for young families or even older families, that they say, "Hey, this is an opportunity for me to be able to get ahead in the world. I can buy this property, live in part of it, rent the other part of it, and help myself get ahead later on." It also deals with the mother-in-law apartment issue, the disabled family member issue, the age and place issue. It reduces that, and I would say almost eliminates the issue of absentee landlords. Those problems that we've been hearing from the folks that are living in these neighborhoods of saying, "We've got folks that, we've got landlords that are not keeping their properties up." I was landlord-tenant attorney for years. I had the, I was blessed by the fact that I had great landlord clients who kept their places up because they chose to keep their places up. But I spent an awful lot of time in courtrooms listening to other lawyers' hearings about all of the hassles that were going on in those rentals. I know that problem is real, and I know it's difficult for staff to be able to keep up with it. I know it's difficult for the courts to keep up with it. That's a way to be able to, I think, to be able to make a small change in rental stock in this community, but also provide those protections of homeownership right there on the site. It creates that long-term connection to neighborhoods that we're looking at. We want our neighborhoods to be strong. We want there to be connections with neighbors. We want neighbors to know neighbors. This helps with that as well. You can see I've thought about this for a little bit.
Are you ready to make that speech?
Yeah, and I was making notes. I made some notes. And I gave the oppor, and I think it gives the opportunity for us to do what we've been talking about as a possibility of increasing the, increasing both owner occupied stock in the community and rental stock in the community without all of the associated issues and problems that are coming along with it. Or at least eliminating a big chunk of those. We have, we've been told in the studies that our infrastructure can handle it. I know that people have questions about parking. I know that everybody who lives in those neighborhoods knows that on-street parking is not allowed year-round in those neighborhoods. So if you're going to convert your place, you're going to have to be able to provide on-street parking that fits what you're doing. And as we talked about earlier, yes, we are requiring a minimum of one parking spot per unit, but that's not the maximum of parking per unit. So we've got the opportunity to do that. I, this is, that's the proposal I'm throwing out there. I want to see what people think about it. The simple thing, if you can't remember what I said at the beginning, is for rentals only, we keep the numbers exactly the same way as they have been. So we don't, we don't, we're not reducing the numbers in terms of rentals only, but we look at the opportunity to reduce the lot size, but only if there's that owner occupancy requirement that goes along with it. And we can throw the same, I want the same things. No short-term rentals. You got to do the three-hundred-foot notice, all of the things that we're doing with, potentially with accessory dwelling units in LDR. We do that in TRN as well. I'll shut up and listen.
Let me play this out.
Yeah.
And tell me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
So we keep everything the way it is for an investor?
Yes.
Okay.
Who doesn't want to live in the neighborhood?
Right.
Right.
Outside of the neighborhood, whatever. But you make the lot size requirement for each unit smaller, for what we're proposing. Right? But the purchaser has to live in one of the units.
If you want the benefit of the smaller lot size, you have to live there.
Okay. So let's say a house burns down on a ten thousand square foot lot, unfortunately, if that were to happen in the TNR. So, right now, how big of a unit can you put on there, Jenna, on ten thousand square feet right now?
Two.
Two unit.
Two unit, so.
If it has sixty feet of furniture, but aren't most of them fifty?
Okay, anyway, yes, this is just an example. We're just playing this out. So it's ten thousand square feet, sixty-foot width. You can put a two unit on it right now. With the proposed, if you're living in one of the units, you can make two side-by-side duplex, same size, so not one-third, not like an ADU, but the same size, so a duplex. You can live in one side and rent out the other. But what would the lot size be allowed if you're owning it? One of the proposed is?
Sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred square foot lot.
Thirty, three thousand two hundred fifty per unit.
Yeah.
Which is, that's the current Udo proposal would be to, for that to apply to all lots, the mayor's proposal, as I understand it, that would only, you would only be able to access that level by living, the owner living in one of the units.
Right.
A ten thousand square foot lot right now, the standard would allow for three units, right here.
Right now?
No.
No.
With the proposal, you have three. On the ten thousand, it'd be three.
Right.
Yeah.
So under my proposal, Brooke, if the place burned down, somebody bought it, wanted to live there, they could actually increase the number of units by one. So move from two to three, but they would have to live in one of the units. Which in my mind is better than, is a better solution than two purely rental units.
Agreed.
Based on all of the concerns that we're hearing from the public.
So, in my case, I have a ten thousand square foot lot. Let's say my house burns down. Then I could build a three unit and live in one of them.
Under the proposal I'm putting out there, yes.
Mark, did you say?
Yeah, yeah. So, very interesting idea, Nathan. It probably won't surprise you to hear that I'm going to say, I think we might have some legal issues with that, though, so I think we want to run that by our city attorney. So the first thing that pops into mind is, you know, if you have the same zone district, we really need to be, you know, having the same requirements for the same kind of uses. It's kind of the equal protection thing. So I think we would want to run it by Ron to see if that meets kind of legal muster.
Yeah, let's do that. I was thinking through that, Mark, and they're actually different uses. One's an owner occupied use, the other one's not. In my mind, anyway, but Ron's the city attorney, not me.
Yeah, Ron might say, "Yeah, but they're all residential," so I think it's an intriguing idea. And we will definitely look into it further, but I think that's a big legal issue. I think we got to get to Ron right away.
Okay.
What's the legal part? What is the part that concerns you, Mark? That?
That capitalists should be able to make money.
David, it's more serious than that.
Yeah, it's potentially having kind of two, two different or properties being treated differently in the same zone district. So you're saying you have, if it's owner occupied, you have one kind of property, right? If it's rental, it's a different property, right? But we don't know if that will catch legal muster, but we will find out.
I see, okay.
I'm not going to argue the issue. I compared it to what we're proposing in LDR with accessory dwelling units. That they're both residential, but we've got different requirements if you're occupied.
Yeah.
Run it by Ron.
Yeah, we will do that.
Actually, before we run it by Ron, I'd like to hear what other folks think about it, because if nobody likes it, no point in spending Ron's time on it.
Right.
I would say, having worked in this issue and thinking, trying to think of a way to make that work, I would strongly affirm what the mayor has proposed.
Anyone else, Luis?
I like it, too.
Oh, Andy?
Yeah.
The only thing I'm trying to kind of work through is, it's kind of going back to the question, we're treating it separately. I do, since the beginning, I think owner occupied makes a lot more sense. My concern is, once they do the conversion, and now the owner decides to sell it to someone else, how do we deal with it after the fact? Now, we're hoping that a owner will buy it, but if an investor buys it, they have a two unit, which is only legally allowed under zoning at that point to be a one unit. So how do we deal with that issue? So that may be the follow-up question to the attorney's role. How do we?
And to piggyback on that, sorry, Luis. But to piggyback on what Luis just said, because this would be written into zoning, there are legal non-conforming protections. So, someone could say, and again, this is a question for Ron, but it's the rabbit hole that starts to go down. Let me pre, first, I think that this idea makes a lot of sense. But it's also my job to bring up some of these rabbit holes, one of which is like Luis was saying, enforcement on people after they build, right? What happens for the second, third, fourth owner? But, and how do non-conforming protections that exist within zoning apply to that? And would it help if this rule was outside of zoning in some other ordinance, which kind of defeats the purpose of the Udo in some ways? But that doesn't blow up the idea. Just, that's a potential rabbit hole that could go down. The other question I had is, what if an investor builds a condo property? So someone comes in, they build a complex, they want to sell all four units. They don't want to live on the site themselves, but everyone there would be an owner occupant.
Interesting, okay.
Would that qualify?
What is that required today? Fourteen thousand square feet, right?
Yeah, because now it's, today, it's, it doesn't matter, so ownership or renting, you have the same level. So fourteen, four hundred, and current ordinance, thirteen thousand in the Udo to do that. So I'm just wondering if, you know, if that would be included. And then the rabbit hole question on that is, a developer builds that, each condo owner buys, the developer's out. Each condo owner owns. Now, this condo owner decides to rent their condo. That happens all the time, right? This condo owner decides to rent their condo. This condo owner decides to rent a condo. So now we're okay, right? But condo owner number four now cannot rent their condo, because we have to have one owner occupant on site. So, I like the idea generally, but I do think that these sort of rabbit hole questions need to be thought through, probably by Ron.
Exactly why I presented it and exactly why there's a group working on this, not just one guy sitting in his office.
Lynn?
Yeah, I'm kind of, I'm sort of, my mind is shifting to a different topic, sort of. I sort of feel like we need to be coming at it from the other direction, which is, you know, based on some of the things that Ryan presented in regards to what our need is, do we need to be coming at it from the side of, how many units are we talking about? And then, and then decide which standard to choose, as opposed to, you know, as I looked at all of this great data that Jenna provided for us, I found myself kind of, for lack of a better word, guessing what seemed to make sense, as opposed to determining based on what our need is. So I'm not, I'm not exactly certain how to do the math on something like that, but it does, it does feel like we need to, I would prefer to come at it from the other direction.
Okay, Jennifer?
I guess my question would be like, from a regulatory enforcement perspective on owner occupied, like, is that, is that something that the staff has the capacity to regulate that? Because I can see often, you know, maybe a owner was kind of there, and how do you confirm that that actually is owner occupied? And how do we make sure that that is truly the case if a neighbor has an issue? And what would be the documentation required for that? And would it be checked on a regular basis?
Right.
We do that by that PRE that Ryan was talking about, the principal residence. And so that's how it's registered with the supervisor's office. So if you have a hundred percent PRE, then that means that it's owner occupied. Now, as to whether or not that individual is living there three hundred and sixty-five days a year, that's not really the definition of owner occupied.
Right. And they can't get a loan as owner occupied, correct, in their mortgage? Like, that's how that's determined.
The PRE, also their taxes go up, right? If you lose your PRE status, I know that that happens occasionally to people who have short-term rentals. There are some jurisdictions that will troll Airbnb and jack your taxes up if you list. Just, but I am wondering maybe if the PRE thing would address some of the concerns I brought up in that if we use that term, right, then technically we're actually not requiring people to be owner occupied. We're requiring them to come in and get their PRE. If they opt not to do that and opt to pay the higher tax rate, they could potentially still rent it out. Or, I guess, flip side that, right? They would be required to come in and get their PRE in order to qualify. So that may be an enforcement mechanism. I mean, and it's got some teeth to it, right? Because it's like, if you don't do this, your taxes go up. That's a pretty direct, direct stick, right?
Brad, did you have something?
Yeah. And to begin with, my first reaction to what Nathan was saying is that it sounds like it would take care of some of the concerns that we've heard. Take care of some of the concerns that we've heard people talk about from that neighborhood. And so it's, it's kind of innovative and interesting to. My other side says, do we know of any communities that have tried this? And what has happened as a result? It's quite unusual, and so it may, we may be able to find other communities, either in Michigan or elsewhere, that have actually put this in practice. And what has happened over a five or 10 year period in those communities? It would give us some confidence that maybe, not only is it legal, but there's some way that we, we think this might actually work. So that's, that's my first comment, my second comment is going back to the original discussion that we were going to have about this matter. And that is. When I was looking at all these options. And, I don't want to, I don't want to steer away from what Nathan said, but I don't want to ignore something else that I've been thinking a lot about. And that is, our existing. Our existing code says that we can have a two unit option. And, but it has to be ninety-six hundred square feet per unit, and it has to be sixty foot frontage. The, the next option down from there, which is six, reducing the requirement to sixty-five hundred square unit. Square feet per unit and fifty feet. The, the change between those two options is, first of all, the first one, there's a hundred and seventy-one eligible properties in the T R N district. And if we switch it to the next one, which is sixty-five hundred per square feet. Suddenly there are eight hundred and eighty-one units that are available for, or eight hundred and eighty-one eligible properties that can go to, to two units.
Fred, but that's also, the frontage is different.
Yeah, I know the frontage is different also. I'm trying to draw attention to the fact that I, I, I think that. Going all the way back to the neighborhood meetings that we had in this neighborhood, and the reaction that we got from talking about these options. I think that our approach to whatever we do here has to be kind of a go slow approach. That we, we would rather, if we're gonna make any changes in this area, we should be, they should be modest. And we should, we, we, if they were dramatic and, for the dramatic like this, from one seventy-one to eighty-eighty-one. We could never, we could never reverse ourselves and take that back, if, if we have pretty negative consequences from that. And so I'm, I'm very much in favor of going slow and seeing what happens, rather than, rather than simply trying to increase. Great number of units in, in that neighborhood, and that, in that, in that residential zone.
So Fred, that would be, you're talking, doing more, something more of, so number one is existing.
Yeah.
You're thinking, keeping the sixty foot width.
Yeah.
Maybe reducing the square feet size of the lot for a two unit to like seven thousand or eight thousand? No, seven thousand would be option five. For a two unit.
Yeah. And yes, and that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, and that's what I'm suggesting for all of us to think about. That would, that would. Sort of comply with, I, I think with the general concerns of the neighborhood are. I, I also found that neighborhood to be very open minded and willing to, some of the people more willing to explore these things. But nobody wants to be overwhelmed with all of the external problems that would come with so many additional units. And I think we have to be really careful with, with how we go forward on this. Whether it's through nation, Nathan's idea, or through the other ways that we were talking about this, we have to be careful and go slow. And take our time and see what happens, because we can always add to things later, but we can never take it back.
Right, reining it back in is much more.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if I could just make a couple of comments, based on what, what Fred just said, especially, can you hear me? My, I guess, internet is unstable.
You're good.
Um, so, owner occupied for any of these options, that was one of the choices. Of the many options that the staff provided here. The other option, which we've only touched on a little bit, is potentially doing a pilot.
Yeah.
For, for these options, for any of these different options. And, and I think that, that that goes to what Fred is saying, as well as what Brooke had said. Which is potentially just decreasing the number, and Lynn also, potentially decreasing the. Eligible properties that, that could take advantage of this. I think that it's important, just to remind planning commissioners, to also note that there are, that, you know, going back to the intent. Of why this was all started in the first place. I, I think, as my own professional opinion, it would be to choose one of these options. Rather than to go the owner occupied route. Other than the legal, you know, issues that, that might occur. Also, it's not really pushing the needle very much, because ultimately. I would say, my, my guess, based on what I know in terms of. Housing trends, et cetera, and certainly all of my conversations with Ryan. And with others that are experts in housing, that ultimately what will happen is that there'll be even less. Opportunities for people to. To, to take advantage of, of trying to increase housing stock, right? And take advantage is probably not, not good semantics, but. In order to meet the intent, basically, of, of where we're starting, which is to push the needle just slightly. Very few. Owner occupied, honestly, very few people, owner occupied residents are going to want to build another unit. There will be some, and that's part of the reason, the rationale for, for this. But very few, I would say, will. And I, and my professional opinion would be instead to go a slower approach. Decrease the lot size and potentially do a pilot, and, and you have flexibility with that. Again, you know, even if you don't do a pilot, anything is not written in stone, you can absolutely always come back to it. And as you've heard from, from Ryan, at, you know, there. At no point are two hundred and ninety-seven properties going to. Convert into.
Overnight.
And yeah, I mean, overnight, or even in the next ten.
Ever, or ever, yeah.
Forever, right.
Ability, it just goes way down. Can I address my opinion on the pilot part? I'm not a fan of the pilot with this, because I feel like you're just, I don't know, I feel like you're messing with. Properties too much, if you're going to make a conversion or build a building this way. With short term rentals, I feel like it was a lot more feasible to do a pilot program. Because you're not converting a house in any way, or specifically building a house, you're just using it differently. I don't know, I'm kind of against the pilot program with this, I'm more for doing a more gentle approach, like what Fred was saying.
That's my question, how do we obtain? A more gentle approach, I'm just trying to figure out, without trying to find a pilot or capping it. I mean, with that number, I see the fourteen, I think those are the first fourteen that are gonna get switched. I think, in reality, their cost is lower, to be able to make that happen. So out of, out of two ninety-seven, I know those fourteen are probably gonna be the first ones. So, how do we? Not use those fourteen, or how do we prevent that? I think that, that's what I'm trying to figure out, I, I agree with your, the pilot, I'm trying to figure out how we can make it feasible, where. Can track it and monitor, and I don't know if we can without a pilot program, just giving everybody the right, I feel it's gonna be much more difficult.
Lynn?
I, I was thinking that it was hard, it's hard to determine success with a pilot this way, right? The, I mean, I like, I actually do like the idea of a pilot, we, I think we'd have to really think it through. I like the idea, I also like the idea of a buffer. But it was easy with the short term rentals, like we knew what success meant. So I think it's, it's harder to determine that here, and I think with a buffer, we, I know we've talked a little bit about that. That helps to not affect one particular area more than another. I'm still, I still go back to. Right, once we, once we sort of land on which of those recommendations we want, I'd love to hear from everybody, how they, how you're hearing. What, why that number makes sense to you.
I, I can go on that.
Allowed to limit if we don't have a pilot? In other words, can we put a thousand foot buffer, so you can't have six on one block? But it's gotta be, every couple of blocks.
Jenna, are we allowed to limit if it's not a pilot?
Yeah, I believe so, I mean, short term rentals isn't a pilot anymore, and we still have a five hundred foot buffer, so.
And we'd, and we'd have to take into consideration existing, existing properties as well.
The only thing I'd caution is that it can't be arbitrary. You can't be like, we want ten. Why? Because we want ten, right? Hey, you have to have a, a reason for it, and the buffer is better than putting a hard number on it.
Well, having said that, I mean, in short term rentals, we have a twenty-five, twenty-five max, and five hundred foot buffer. So, you know, and, and we have a rationale in there, and that's, that's had, you know, legal muster, so.
But yeah, the, the rationale helps, and I think, as noted, it's short term rentals could slide in and out of existence, right? I'm, I'm rent, I'm short term rental now, now I'm not, it's, and I've opened up a spot for someone else. Whereas once that one of these is built on a lot of this size, it's there. That right has now forever been taken away from number eleven.
Once you converted family to a two family, it's converted, and you have to pay a lot of money to convert it back. Or vice versa. Lynn, did you have something else?
No.
Okay.
So I can, I can answer Lynn's question about where I'm falling on all of this. So we'll set aside what I said before, because maybe that is something that we look at in the future. Where I'm falling on this and, and looking at the numbers, and. And for those in the audience who are listening, I, I, my recollection is, this is not the first time we've looked at numbers like this. I remember looking at numbers like this, I think over the summer, where we're trying to figure out what the right, right amount was, and put a proposal out there for the public to. To comment on, and for those people who have commented, thank you for that, we appreciate that. I'm, I'm falling in the four thousand square foot per unit range with this. And then the reason for that is, when I look at the total number of units, after listening to public comment on this. I think we need to greatly scale back the number of these that we're, that we're doing. Because we're, if we're looking at moving the needle, we gotta move it just a little bit on this. I still, frankly, I still prefer the owner occupancy issue, but I'm, I'm looking more in the four thousand square foot level, and I don't have a problem with saying. A five hundred foot buffer either. Because again, looking at the idea, once we've let the, the cat out of the bag on this thing, or whatever analogy you want to use. It's really hard to put the toothpaste back in the tube, let's, let's make some metaphors there. We can let the toothpaste out a little bit at a time, and we can look at it and go, hey, that seemed like that worked, and it's not having a. Significant negative impact, and these are the percentages that we're seeing of conversions that are happening, and maybe we come back and say, well, let's. Revisit that, and maybe we want to move that needle a little bit more. But when I look at these, and when I look at, for instance, the. The two unit options, we've got currently a hundred and seventy-one eligible properties. If we go down to four thousand square feet, that gets us to two forty-eight. That's a, about what, a fifty percent increase in the number? Pardon me?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, thank you, I'm a words guy, not a numbers guy, Dave, thanks, I appreciate that.
Change the frontage, though, also, when you do that.
No, leave it at fifty.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with, I'm, I'm fine with that, I, I'm not sure I, I. The frontage makes a difference to me, maybe you guys can convince me why it might. But I, I just, I like the way those numbers fall, where it's about a fifty percent increase in eligible properties. We know that not everybody's going to take advantage of those, it gives us the opportunity to see what's gonna happen if we do a five hundred foot buffer. They're not concentrated all in one neighborhood, and then we've got the ability to, then we can do that. If we want to go back at some point in the future, after Ron has taken a look at that, that other proposal and said, well, hey, we can move that needle more. If we do an owner occupancy piece, I'm good with that at some point in the future as well. But, but that's where I'm falling.
Five, I think five and six are quite similar to each other, I mean, we were gonna fine tune something after we came up with a general idea. Five and six are both, are both quite similar, in their effect.
Yes, the number, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and Lynn, I, I actually approach it from the opposite direction you do Lynn for, for a reason. I'm not, I'm not looking at hitting a particular target in the number of these that we actually want to convert. Because in my mind, that's kind of chasing the market, that's saying, what do we, what do we need now, let's plan for that, I don't want to do that. I want to, I want to try to put something in place that's gonna last as long as possible and work as long as possible. Rather than trying to fine tune this all the time, I would much rather put something out there, we go, let's, let's see how this works, let's see what kind of response. There is to it. And then if we need to, if we see we need to make a change, let's, let's do that, or if we, if there's a problem, let's, let's figure out a way to deal with that. But I think this is a small incremental change for that neighborhood, that still follows that idea of the master plan. And what we're hearing from people like Ryan Kilpatrick, who say, we, it, it would be healthy for the community to be able to increase some of the options that are here. I'm still a bigger fan of the owner occupancy piece, but I can go this route.
So I have an idea to throw out here.
We haven't heard from Andrew yet, so go ahead.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna jump in.
Okay. So since this is a safe space, and we like to throw ideas here. Is it possible to hardwire in a schedule for slowly raising the temperature on the eight thousand, the seventy-five hundred square feet? So that makes commission and council come back to this topic?
I mean, it's not really something that can be written into the zoning ordinance, as a regulatory document, but as a policy. As a planning commission policy, or you can recommend it as a city council policy. That's how you could do that.
Okay.
Would the pilot do that, though? Would it make us do it?
The pilot could potentially do it, I mean, because it would be a, you know, two years, it would expire, or one year, whatever, when it you gave, yes. But not like a step schedule.
I was actually gonna comment something very similar to what Andrew just said. I think what I like, or the one challenge that I find in the short term rental was, it really was a first come, first served basis. Once that first one is created, even if, you know, two hundred feet away at that point, I don't have the option, because someone beat me to it. Especially if we're gonna be doing this, I would almost rather like to see who wants to come in, so almost say, every quarter, or every, you know, X amount of time. Submit proposals, just look at those and, and see who's coming in, and be able to gauge what makes sense, what doesn't. So at least we have some sort of ability to look at the bigger picture versus just allowing the one at a time, and then five months down the road, we realize. Maybe that one didn't make sense, because this one's here, so is there a way that we can figure out kind of a schedule? Every quarter, it's every May, it's every August, submit this for the first year, or two years pilot, and we can look at it holistically. And decide and see who's making these requests.
Yeah, I, I like that, Luis. Is that you don't want too many of these to convert, right? And you want to have balance and still maintain the neighborhood look and feel. So what I don't understand is, if we look at these different levels, is that an entire block of one neighborhood? That could be eligible, and they all could convert, and then that does kill kind of the character of the neighborhood. So if we had some way to look at how many were allowed per block, or per certain amount of area. Then it, it has that gentle addition of housing without. Turning an entire street into these conversions.
Quick question.
Hey, that's, that's a pretty good segue for Jenna to maybe pull up a map.
Yeah, I was just saying the same thing.
Well, I was just a quick question, though, is the buffer to existing rentals? Or is, in other words, I'm sorry, two units, or is the buffer just for conversions?
Well, we'd have to take, I mean, I, I made that point a little earlier, that I think we'd have to take those into consideration as well.
Or maybe it's rentals that are below the threshold, right? So if it's a rental that conforms with the existing threshold, that wouldn't count. Right, because that's a by right use.
Right.
And the pilot or the buffer would be hurt below that.
Which map were we, you wanting to see?
Yeah, Jenna, why don't you bring up the one, eight thousand square foot, fifty feet of lot width?
Yeah, actually, five or six, both of them are good.
So I, I think you will see some, where there is some groupings.
And I'm, but it's not a shocker to most. And I'm, but it's not a shocker to most of you that it's on 12th Street.
Yeah. The historic district has some bigger lots than kind of the standard 45, 50-foot wide lots.
So this is 8,000, 50, 8,000 square feet, 50 feet frontage?
Yes.
Is that what this one is? Okay.
Yes. And, and to, to the comment of one of the, to, to talk about the comment that somebody made in public comment about preserving the historic district. All of the historic district requirements are overlaid over the top of everything we're doing anyway. We don't have the ability to say, oh, by the way, and you don't have to follow the historic district requirements. Those would still be in place. So if you're in the historic district, you're much less likely, I would imagine, to make a conversion like this.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
Yeah.
You're not going to buy a $350,000 home and convert it into a two-unit.
No, nor, nor are you going to be able to, to skirt the historic district requirements because of this.
Right.
Right.
So if we, so are we talking, so this is, all the, this is 8,000 50-foot square, 50-foot frontage? How many, so, and if we were considering a buffer, would that? Would that limited, would that limited it too much or enough or what?
It looks like the, sorry.
No, go ahead.
It says, I was gonna say, it looks like a buffer would have the most impact in the southwest corner of the district where there's a number of eligible parcels.
And the southeast, the Hazel neighborhood.
Yeah, and, and of course 12th Street.
And 12th.
Yeah, right. But 12th Street, this map is also showing is not necessarily economically viable place for this kind of thing, even if zoning allows it.
Certainly is intriguing.
Yeah.
I mean, we can go the completely opposite route and say that all single-family homes only need 40 feet of frontage and 5,000 square feet.
Well, we have 5,000 square feet already for single-family.
In the, in the TRN?
Yeah, actually the, both of those numbers are existing TRA numbers for single-family. So that's the smallest lot you can create, but if you do create that lot at TRN or TNR, then all you can build on it is a single-family house.
Right. So then even, even more, right? If, if everybody wants a single-family house in those neighborhoods, let's say they have a 8,000 square foot lot and they, their house burns down and they want to build on half of that and sell the other half.
Well, eight, at 8,000, they wouldn't have the ability to do that. At 10,000, they would.
But existing right now, right?
Yeah, well, because you can't create a lot smaller than 5,000 square feet as Udo is currently written.
Right, okay.
But Dan Tiley would like to add some of his information.
Okay.
That's all right.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, one of the, the discussions on, uh, we've had in the office regarding what's more important, the size of the lot or the width of the lot? And a lot of times, when you think about adding another unit, you might get some arguments with this, but nine out of 10 times, you're adding an additional car under the property, at least one. So sometimes you think about the width being more important than, you know, to accommodate for that additional parking space than, because you aren't going to change the depth. So just in thinking about that, you may be, tend to go towards the, the building width. But realistically, if you're doing 8,000 square feet for a two-family, most blocks are 262 feet wide and you divide that in half for a normal lot of 132 feet, they're going to end up with 60 feet anyway.
Yep.
Okay.
So what's that? Do we have, you have a map with that too, Jenna, with the 60-foot? Yeah, so that's number five, I think.
Well, so, so actually I don't have it for the over 1,000 square feet and 60-foot, but I have 7,000, 3,560 feet.
Just go to 8,000. Just go to 8,050 feet.
Yep.
Unless those are irregular depth lots, those are going to be at least 60 feet.
Okay.
Yep. So baked, baked into this proposal, Mayor, would you be thinking then that we have all kind of the, the permitting and procedural things that we've been talking about too? I mean, would you? So right now, the, you know, in the TRN district, you could do this stuff by right, don't have to have a special exception. You would need to get an infill review, but are you, are you thinking in terms of keep, keeping the infill review probably, but would you want any other kind of a special exception or, you know, anything like that baked into the conversion process? Right, right now, Mark, there's not a, there's not a special exception. They don't have to go to, to deal with a special exception if they're going to do it under the current standards, right? I would, here's what I'm, here's what I would say.
Yeah.
Just to make, just to answer that question, whatever their, whatever the requirements are now for someone to do it under the, the lot sizes that we have in place currently, I would suggest that same thing. The only thing I would suggest adding if it's not there is infill. That I think, that I think anytime anything like, like that is done in this district, there needs to be an infill review.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Fill review is included. Dan, special exception when doing a conversion?
Well, cur- currently we are sending those to the zoning board for a conversion. I, I think that this can be handled elsewhere because I think if this going to, for an infill review, some of the same standards for conversion can just be applied at that point.
Yeah, and that was something that we had talked about a while back to take that requirement out. Because it's just adding more bureaucracy.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to add, I want, I want them to meet the standards, but I don't, they don't need to go through two levels of bureaucracy to do it. If we can figure out a way to do it with one, I, you know, I'd prefer that for staff time and volunteer committee times. That would be good.
So we're leaning towards option six?
Yeah.
Five, okay, six.
Yeah, so I, I think what Dan just said is that six also is 60 feet for the most part.
Yeah. The maps for six and five probably aren't that different.
Yeah. I, I, let me throw one thing in since if we're, if we're kind of collapsing these options down to this one, I'd like to just bring up something that Mark and I were talking about today, which is the reason why we would choose one of these over another. I think it's important that, that the public understands the commission's purpose in all of this, as well as the technical parts of this. And that is, we were talking today about, we have these two purposes here. One is that we're trying to increase the number of units in some of these neighborhoods to, to, for the single purpose of providing more housing choice and options for members of our community. But at the same time, we, we want to maintain the character of these neighborhoods because they're so special. And so we would never do anything that disrupted the character that, because it's, it's a very viable and wonderful neighborhood. And so we thought, whatever we choose here has to strike a balance between those two things. One, at least modestly increasing housing options, if we can do it, and two, maintaining the character of the neighborhood. Those are our two goals here. And I think people need to understand that's how we're coming down on this so we're not misrepresented. Discussions that take place.
Yeah, I think that those are really kind of some of the framing things that the planning commission initially had with this whole endeavor too, you know? Yeah, and I, I agree completely Fred and, and thank you too for that, Mark. And I, and also the one thing that I've been trying to express to folks who've been reaching out to me with this is this, this is not something we decided to do out of whole cloth. This came out of the master plan process back in 2017. That one of the goals of the master plan was to do those things exactly that as Fred had said.
So, so, uh, did we decide on a, on a buffer distance? Or are we not, or did we not land on that?
I don't think we got that far yet.
The blocks are what, 660 feet east to west and 330 north to south? Am I remembering that right? Mark and Jenna?
Yes.
132 by, oh, I'm sorry, those are the property.
62.
Yeah, 262, 264 by 660 or 990 on the long ones. You know, maybe it would be good for Jenna and perhaps Alex, our GIS person, to do some mapping. We can play with some of those distance kind of requirements and see how it might impact this map here.
That would be helpful, I think.
Yeah. I think that'd be great.
We use 600 on the, uh,
500, I think, I think it's 500 on short-term rentals.
Just, just for simplicity sake for staff, I'd love to see that number stay the same if it makes sense. I don't want to just pick an arbitrary number. If, if 500 works, that's where I would lean, but I'd want to see how it works with this.
And I think we picked 500 because it's like one per block about.
That's what I thought too. I think one thing we got to keep in mind though, with this whole buffer thing, we may end up, we may end up having less eligible properties than are eligible right now. If we have a big buffer, it's going to take out a lot of these blue things that you see on the map here. So we'll, we'll evaluate. And I think 500 feet is gonna, ooh, yeah, but, uh, you know, we'll, we'll look at it, you know, maybe it's 150, maybe it's 200. We'll, we'll play with that and, and see what it looks like.
Okay.
Right.
Right.
Two cents in there. I'm not totally sold on needing a buffer on.
Yeah. I, I'll chime in that I don't love the idea of a buffer.
Yeah, it's, it's feel like, I feel like the short-term rental, it's needed because you've got people that are coming and going constantly. But whether you're a homeowner or a renter, you're still invested in that neighborhood, maybe for a shorter period of time, I don't know. But you're still going to send your kids to the school in the area. You're still going to be working in the neighborhood. You're still going to be getting to know your neighbors at least a little bit. You're driving around in that neighborhood and walking, whatever. But I don't, I don't feel like it's necessary for a longer-term rental or homeownership.
I, I don't want, I don't want staff to do unnecessary work if they don't, if they don't have to. After listening to Andrew and Brooke and I was looking at the map going, I'm not sure when looking at the eligible properties and the economically viable properties, they're, they're already looking like they're close to 500 feet from one another already. But they're just, there just aren't that many of them there that are going to make sense to do that. But I don't know if, I, you know, if there, if there are three of us right now that are going, I'm not sure. I, I'd hate to have staff spend the time putting together a bunch of maps if planning commission's not there.
I could hear Jenna's eyes rolling. No, I'm just kidding.
I don't, I don't want, I don't want Jenna to have to do the extra work if all of us are going, well, we're not sure that a buffer makes sense anyway. And I'm not sure, I, I agree with Brooke and Andrew. I, I think it would work really, I think it would work just fine without the buffer. I don't think the buffer necessarily would make a change or make a difference.
So that 12th Street block, if you don't think all those could potentially convert, they're just too large of a property or?
They're too valuable and they're in the historic district.
Those homes, there's two homes that sold last year on that block for almost for 400,000 each. One of them was the high 300s. One of them, they were both right around 400,000 and they're very well-preserved homes.
Historic district standards, I mean, it's very, very specific. It's very, very difficult to do exterior changes. What's that?
Yeah, I mean, you can't even, I have a neighbor that has a structurally, potentially structurally unsound garage, but they can't tear it down because it's a historic garage. So.
I do have a challenge for all of the commissioners. And that is how do we encourage owner-occupied rentals? And I've had that challenge for the 30 years I've been involved in these committees. Back in the R Street days.
I'd, I'd love to see it too, Dave. I would love to see the owner occupancy and I'd love to see us put some sort of incentive for that.
R Street actually had cash that we could give to houses that were owner-occupied. That was the only criteria.
So currently we have a reduction on building fees if you take a home from multi-unit to, and convert it to single-family. And that's an incentive.
But that's not an owner-occupied rental and it's not helping us with the housing stock.
But the PRE helps, right? That's tax break for being owner-occupied. But that's already in place. So to me, that's been factored into the market already, right? It's not like that changes anything.
My question is, so this is for the two units. Is that what you all would want to do when we go to the, you know, three-unit options?
My answer to that's yes.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. Let's take it, they'll get the map real quick, but yes.
Yeah.
I looked at the numbers, Andrew.
I'm, I'm a maps guy, not a numbers guy.
Yeah, I'm very visual.
So that would be what, which option?
12,000.
The 12,000.
12,000 for a three-unit.
For three, but 12.
And 16 for a four.
So I have in the map, I have 1,300 with 50-foot width and then I have 1,400 with 50-foot width. So it's really very, very sparse. Can someone who has the, uh, tell me what, you know, tell us what the eligible properties would be for this option?
Which one is that? That's the.
Option three.
Action three.
Option three is 10,503.
This is the four-unit option, I'm sorry.
Option three is 32.
And what about option four?
Option four?
Oh, that's 132.
Let's see.
Option four is 60, oh, is 63.
We're talking about four-unit options.
No, I'm sorry.
No, no, three. So it's, it's 132 Jenna for the 10, for the 10,563 for the 12,000.
Okay, and what is the existing?
Existing three units.
31.
31. So currently only 1% are eligible for this and it jumps to 5% on option three. 3% for option four.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Well, and of course, these are, this looks like, these are all the same properties too that we see, like they're eligible for two, three and four. Three, right? They could do three.
Well, if they could do three, they could do two, right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with these numbers. This is obviously much more sparse than the, than the two-unit, but that's what I would expect.
Okay, so again, for, 4,000. So which one? Option three or option four? You're saying option four, correct?
Option four.
Right.
Because that's the 4,000 square feet per unit. And then the other one is option four also, for the four units, because that's also 4,000 square feet.
And that eligibility from existing to
15 to 23.
There's, that's, what is that, 47 and a half percent, Dave? Increase?
I don't know. It's the two-unit, you know, it's people converting single-family to duplexes.
Eight more units are eligible.
Eligible properties.
That means 24-unit. Or is that the four-unit?
Four.
Well, like I said, it.
I think that we'll probably see more of these, maybe not with the, you know, the TNR district, but it's going to be interesting to see, you know, how council reacts to this latest PUD proposal. And if that all goes through, I mean, think of it, folks, there's, there's a lot of kind of old churches that are in this area also that could probably be reinvigorated or repurposed for housing. We might see some of those come on, you know, come online too, or come in the form of little.
you know, come online too, or come in the form of little P U D proposals for you all.
Yeah, that sounds familiar, Mark. Seems like we just talked about something like that.
Just do that.
We'll have to see how Exhibit A goes, eh?
So four thousand.
Okay, so are we ready to move on to the next topic then?
Uh, real quick, I have one thing. Um, would it be possible to get staff's recommendation on some mechanism that makes planning commission come back to this topic in like two or three years?
Analyze it to be.
Yeah, just so, you know, we don't bake it in and forget about it for all of time.
We could put that in the tickler file and we'll hold you accountable to it.
I imagine there's going to be some requirement to come back and review the zoning, the new zoning code at some point.
Oh, I also, um, oh, now I've lost my train of thought.
Uh-oh.
So I, I understand what you're saying about a buffer. That totally makes sense to me and so, um, but I wish there was a way that we could kind of have a better, a better way to kind of limit it. I don't think it's particularly comforting to say those, I, I, we, I can, I understand the economics of it all, um, but it isn't necessarily all that comforting to say, well, we, we don't think that based on this information, we don't think that this is, you're not gonna get the worst case scenario here on this street, like these are not going to all convert. So I, I wish there was a way that we could somehow regulate that, you know, even, like, I understand how the buffer doesn't work. Is there, is there some other mechanism? That we could, and, and we don't need to have that discussion right now, but just to throw it out there for y'all to think about. Um, as we, because I think this is fine. I'm, I'm happy with these, with these, um, with these choices. She's like, still have that little niggling thing in my brain.
I, I get exactly what you're saying, Lynn. You're, we're currently asking city residents to, to trust us on, on the, and to trust the historic record on that, but wouldn't it be nice to be able to say, you don't have to trust us. We put, we put away, uh, we put a mechanism in there to prevent that from happening. Is that what I, am I understanding right?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, I like, I, I like that too. I'm not sure what that is, but yeah.
Yeah. So if we could think about that, just, I mean, maybe there's some creative solution out there to allow for that, but.
Yeah.
We'll put our noggins together. I mean, that's, that's a Jenna, Chris, and question for me. I think we'll do some of this, uh, separation or kind of buffer mapping too, just to see what's, what that looks like, even with kind of some minimal buffers, but.
Yeah, that could, that's too true. It could be minimal as opposed to hundreds of feet, right?
Yeah.
You know, if we're saying fit, sorry, Mark, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we, we can look and see once, what some other communities maybe have done too with other kind of separation requirements, or perhaps if, you know, if they can say, hey, no more than two of these per block or.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
We can, we can research that.
Okay, thank you.
Are we good?
Yep.
Yep, alright.
Uh, with that, I have to bounce to another meeting, so good luck, everybody, and I will be in touch. I guess I'll see you next week for regular scheduled to this again.
Okay.
Bye, everybody.
See you, Chris.
Chris.
Oh, sorry, everybody. I didn't realize my camera was off. I hate that.
Okay.
Anybody else going to the county meeting tonight, tonight?
I am.
Well, that's in four minutes.
I know.
I'll go anyway when we're done.
Oh, that's true. If they let us in.
Well, let, let's see what we can get done in the next four minutes.
Yeah. So quite a bit to get.
At, at the same time, we're not gonna decide anything in four minutes, right? So if we're gonna can it, we should can it.
Can we decide one more thing before they leave?
What do we got for next week, Jenna? I mean, could we just roll these to next week? Are we good or?
I mean, we, uh, we have to go through the, uh, you know, the planned was to go through the Udo. Um, you know, the formatting and whatnot in order to get those comments to Chris and his team.
Yeah.
Going through these things though, with two people leaving and they can input later?
That as well.
Actually, three of us, three of us were gonna go to that.
Yeah.
And I've actually looked at the formatting and I, I would say it's working for me. I sent you a couple of corrections, correct?
Correct, very much appreciated. Um, so it's up to you all. I mean, we, we have pushed back the deadline to uh, March ninth, right? But we do, you know, we're always getting more, more stuff in to, uh, to discuss. So at a certain point, you know, we, we really need to stick with it and, and get this done. So I know that the, um, that their webinar will be posted online as well for the training. Um, so potentially that's, uh, another option for those that wanted to attend it. It's really up to you though, planning commissioners, as to what you wanna do right now.
I mean, my two cents is that three hours on a Zoom meeting is probably the max for most people to be productive, and if we're really gonna be productive.
Oh, I feel completely, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thoughtful. I, I was great to hear some of the neighbors say, you know, hey, we're taking our time, and I would rather take the time when our brains are fresh versus pushing.
Right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, having said that though, that might mean though, that we'll need to have additional meetings. Um, because each of these site homes takes quite a while to go through and there's public comment, et cetera. So just letting you know that.
But we'll do what we gotta do to be able to get it done in the timeframe that we gotta get it done.
Yeah.
I think we'll see everybody next week, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Good. So do we need a motion for adjournment?
Study session, you do not.
Alrighty then.
Okay, adios.
See ya.
Bye, everybody.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Everybody.